Okay, it's six o'clock. This is the regular meeting of the Sanford City Council. September twenty first. This meeting will be conducted in person and by a remote video conference. And teleconference pursuant to one M R S A section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council rules of procedure as amended and adopted. August third, twenty twenty one, reflecting recent recommendations of the U S C D C. An adoption by the state of Maine C D C pertaining to the conduct of meetings indoors in the public space. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting I D. Eight seven six one nine eight two eight nine four three and password nine five four nine nine six or via computer. At the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also commit comments by the city of Sanford website at W W W dot Sanford main dot org under email city department city council. This evening, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Council Martell, as well as the moment of silence. I've asked that everyone please mute your phones while Council Martell leaves. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Martell. First order of business is the roll call. Council Martell.
Present.
Council Hanselman. Council Tuttle.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I am Anne Marie Mistracchio, the mayor of the city of Sanford, and we're joined this evening by the city manager Stephen Buck and Larissa Ricketts, the city manager's executive assistant. First item on the agenda, minutes twenty one dash four five eight dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, September seventh. Twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve.
I think I heard Council Tuttle with a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Deputy Mayor Hurley. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty one dash four five nine dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held. On Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion to approve as written?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Council Tuttle, second by Council Stackpole.
Stackpole.
Okay, sorry. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Council Martell.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Present, yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am yes, unanimous of all those present. Mayor's report, city council subcommittee report. Um, I will begin. And I will say that most of my mayor's report is my, the subcommittee report, so um, I will begin with. Municipal operations and property subcommittee met. Ian Howseal brought an issue to the subcommittee's attention regarding the lights on the Gary Sullivan stairway in the Midtown Mall. Previous owner of the mall allowed the installation of the electrical panel that controlled the lights. In one of his nearby buildings. The current owner turned off the breaker and refused to turn it back on. Absent a written agreement, it was decided that the city will install a new meter under city control and ensure that the lights are illuminated. Council chambers will be used for in-person absentee voting beginning on or around October fourth. As well as accommodating school committee meetings and candidate's night. New Cody said she anticipates no conflict among these activities. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Hurley for organizing candidate's night so quickly, and she has requested I share the following information. Candidate's night will be held on October seventh and follow C D C guidelines for in-person meetings. No audience will be allowed and candidates will come just prior to their portion of the presentation. Moderator Sean Sullivan and Tammy Wells will be tasked with developing the questions to be posed to candidates. And those questions will not be given to anyone ahead of time. Masking will be required by all participants in the room. Candidates, however, may choose to participate through a Zoom option. The evening will be live streamed as well as recorded for viewing at a later time. Atlantic Broadband and their practice of bundling their services and not offering a simple basic cable plan was verified by the city manager when he posed as a potential customer. The city's attorney agreed that this seems to be a violation of federal law as well as the franchise agreement with the city. The city manager was waiting to hear back from American Broadband before any further action is taken. I want to thank Council Tuttle for bringing this to our attention. The public safety subcommittee met and again reviewed the overnight parking ordinance. It is still not what the committee believes is needed and they task. Staff with crafting a more focused ordinance. That addresses heavy commercial vehicles parked overnight on residential streets. Human resource director Stacy Howes reported that crossing guards have been in short supply and resulted in the city not being able to cover all areas. A recommendation to raise the wage to twenty dollars an hour seemed to have worked and worked and she was hopeful to have complete coverage within two weeks. Engine noise complaints on Lebanon Street have been received and various methods of dealing with this problem were discussed. The city manager feels the brakes are not the problem and the noise is produced by modifications to the truck exhaust system. One solution is to enforce the noise ordinance as well as involving main D O T in the inspection of these modified exhaust systems. The police department presented a comprehensive update on police, on P D activity. Suffice it to say, they're very busy with a number of ongoing and new initiatives, and I plan to request that their next step be made. At a council meeting for all councillors as well as the public to hear. And finally, the land bank commission met and agreed to send four more properties to the council for dangerous building hearings, and these are expected to appear. On the agenda of the October nineteenth meeting. Updates were also provided on previously identified dangerous buildings. And that's all I have this evening. I think. Um, for items that are not on the agenda, councillors, does anybody have any subcommittee update?
Yeah, I think, I think we've got a couple of things. One of the items is on the agenda. Just, um, let me just. Change things over here.
Was one that was on the agenda, but if I think there might have been something else that.
Yeah, so let's start with the solid waste, uh, subcommittee, uh, met last Tuesday at one o'clock or, or, uh, excuse me. Two o'clock, uh, thereabouts. Um. So, uh, there's going to be, uh, an, an increase to the plastic bags, uh, that the city purchases. Uh, it's, uh, let's call it a nominal amount, uh, and this is because of production shortages. Uh, and, uh, where we, uh, after discussion, uh, and the city manager. Uh, had this all scoped out for us to begin with, we'll be able to absorb that. Uh, increased cost, which is about ten thousand dollars, uh, into our existing budget. Also, uh, if you're, if you're following the information on Ruston Street, um. We're trying to get a, 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 a solar, uh, project going up there and, and we're having some, uh. Uh, additional, uh, slight but troublesome environmental issues. So we had a discussion on, uh. Uh, issuing a contract, uh, to Drummond Environmental for, uh, additional va- uh, gas venting. Uh, and, uh, hopefully that will, will help, uh. Ease the environmental concerns on that property. Uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna move on, but I'll ask Steve if I'm missing anything up there. I know there's, uh. Uh, if, if I've done a good job, just say that and I'll move on.
No, I think, I think you've covered it, Council Stackpole.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, uh, zoning, zoning met, uh, we are discussing one of the items at the zoning, uh, agenda, so I'll leave that, uh, um. Alone, uh, in, uh, the, uh, we had a discussion. Uh, on the ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction and lagooning. Uh, and at the, at the conclusion of the discussion, we decided we, we just needed, uh, more time and more information. Uh, so, uh, that's, uh, that's not on the agenda this evening. Um, but, uh, we're still working on it. Oh, it is. Am I doing the wrong one?
We're doing one, it was the other one that you had. In zoning with the, of the, of the lager stories.
Up in, up in Springvale, okay.
That's the one that's.
Typically, I got them backwards. Yeah, so, uh, but, but we did decide that, uh, we needed more information on that also for, for both of these. Uh, and, um. So anyways, uh, that will be coming up, uh, in, in the future. Uh, we're, we're trying to find the best solution we can for, uh, the, the Springvale. Uh, citizenry up there and, uh, and for potential buyers and I'm not sure we're quite there yet, but we'll get there.
Okay, thank you, Council Stackpole. Council Martell, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, Council Stackpole, um, can you, can you speak a little bit more about the, um, the increase on the bags, um, and whether there were any indications, whether the. Um, there were any quality improvements implemented? I, I'm still seeing. Um, at least some level of complaints about bag issues.
Yeah.
Was that addressed at all?
But, well, no, we didn't, we didn't, uh, we didn't meet with anybody from, uh, from the company. This was just, we were informed of this by the, uh, by the city manager that this cost was, was coming. He'd received proper notification. And again, he, uh, he explained that it. Because I immediately jumped on the cost of petroleum, right? Because these are basically petroleum-based products. As the cost of petroleum goes up, the cost of. Uh, plastic manufacturing goes up. And he said, no, it was just, uh, a question of supply. Uh, that they weren't, they weren't able to, uh, to meet the supply. Again, I'm gonna turn to Steve. Am I, am I saying that correctly, Steve?
It's the, um, it's the shortage of the resin itself. So the, um, the U S is the largest manufacturer of this particular resin. And the U S-based manufacturing is shipping that overseas at an extreme premium, which has driven the price of the product, uh, being used domestically. Uh, so that triggered the, uh, increased cost clause in the contract. We ran that through, it was about a ten thousand dollar hit. We could have absorbed that because we've had a higher than anticipated, um. Amount of collections at the transfer station on other products coming in, so.
Yours or mine?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any, any other subcommittee reports? If not, um, I'm going to go on to. Twenty one dash dash four six six dash zero one, and we have a legislative report from our representative councillor Tuttle.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, Mayor Buck and members of the Sanford City Council. Since I. Last delivered a report to you, the legislature and the governor signed a bipartisan budget and. Made your legislation to deploy American, uh, rescue plan funding. Uh, for the good of, uh, hopefully all the people made. The budget keeps, uh, promises and makes new investments. That will grow hopefully our economy and improve our quality of life. I'm especially proud of the components of the budget that, that, uh, finally to fund. Public education at a fifty-five percent level, something I know the previous mayor had worked out on doing. And, uh, something that I had hoped that we would accomplish this year, and we did. And we fully restored revenue sharing at five percent level over the next two years, something that. Manager Buck and I worked along with Mayor Mistracchio to accomplish, accomplish. Additionally, the budget expands eligibility for property tax, uh, fairness credit. And gradually escalates the rate with municipalities at a reimbursement for the home state exemption of a hundred percent. The budget, uh, further includes, uh, significant measures. To improve, uh, mayors' access to health care and long-term care. Uh, more than, uh, five hundred thousand mayors who. Worked through the pandemic will receive a one-time three hundred dollar payment recognizing. The hazardous conditions they have been working through. Eligible workers include. Those who earn seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, or less and individuals of a hundred and, uh, fifty thousand dollar. Uh, file is on a joint return. After completing most of the work of the year, the legislature adjourned in midsummer. The effective date of, uh, new legislation will be as of October eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Additionally, the guidelines for lawmakers to submit bills for the second regular session is. Twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two is September twenty-fourth. Of which I have submitted a few and I've received a few calls from constituents on doing that. We do anticipate that the legislature, or we do anticipate that the legislature will reconvene a single day. For a special session. This will be, uh, next Wednesday on September twenty-ninth. Uh, to formally complete the redistricting process. We've heard in the. Uh, press lately of the number of changes. I know particularly in the Sanford area, ten years ago, uh. I have expressed my concerns that, uh, hopefully we can keep all of our municipal districts and. The same house districts from a municipal perspective and keeping, uh, the Sanford, uh, district represented by Sanford representatives. Uh, you know, feel, uh, free, uh, if you want to ask any questions, I'm available. And as always, Madam Mayor, it's an honor to serve the people in the legislature and I respectfully. Submitted it as your state representative and city councillor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Representative Tuttle. We really appreciate your hard work. It was paid off well for the city of Sanford. Um, any questions for Council Tuttle? Seeing none, I will ask for the city manager's report.
Sorry, I wanted to report on several items this evening. Uh, the first is that the U S Department of Labor has now confirmed forthcoming vaccination or test requirements will apply to the public sector employers in Maine. Previously, I did not think that that was going to be the case, but we were informed late on Friday. Uh, that according to the U S Department of Labor, uh, we're informed that the, that is forthcoming, that the COVID nineteen vaccine, vaccination requirement will apply to public sector employers. In Maine, including state, county, and local governments and public school systems. Uh, pursuant to President Biden, uh, Biden's actions directing OSHA to develop a rule requiring all employers with a hundred or more employees to ensure their workforce is fully vaccinated for COVID nineteen. Or require any workers who remain unvaccinated to produce a negative COVID nineteen test result on at least a weekly basis before coming to work. Uh, while, uh, that, uh, we now know that, uh, Maine is one of twenty-six states that, uh, signed an agreement with OSHA that they, that Department of Labor that oversees us. Uh, will adhere to the OSHA regulations, therefore we're going to be swept into those. They have not yet written the rule. On this, uh, so we don't know the specific timing. We do not know yet the, um. Um, who's gonna provide for the testing, who's gonna pay for the cost of the testing for those that remain unvaccinated, uh, after the fact. Uh, again, OSHA has not written the regulation yet. Know that it's being challenged by several state attorney generals at the federal level. And we anticipate that there's going to be a challenge here, uh, at the various state levels, at the state level as well under the main Department of Labor, so. Still waiting to ferret out the details on this, uh, report back to the council as soon as we know what the rule is, is going to be. And how we're going to address this. My primary concern at this point in time is the unavailability of rapid tests. So the city acquired, actually the day that President Biden made the announcement of the change in regulations at the federal level. Uh, of, for the pending rule, rule change, we acquired, uh, the last forty-eight rapid tests, uh, that we could get our hands on through Walmart. And since that announcement by, by President Biden, I defy you to find them anywhere.
Well, I was gonna say, are you the reason we can't find any seats?
Well, i- we can get access to some Bi-Nex Now rapid testing, but you know, that has to go to somebody that has the laboratory equipment to do that. Uh, we were advised today that, um. Walgreens is, is swamped, they're behind, you can't even schedule there now. We still can schedule with S M H C, but. The availability of testing right now is very strained. When this regulation comes out, it's gonna put further strains on that, so. In the meeting with the emergency management authority today at York County, I'd asked that question. Who is securing, who is working on getting production ramped up? And how do we secure more testing to satisfy this requirement? So I'll report out as it further develops. Uh, the Nelson Promenade design update, uh, this is, so we had a public hearing at the last council meeting for the fifty percent design review of the Nelson Promenade. That is the ten-foot wide, uh, pedestrian bike ped. Walkway that will go completely around number one pond, provide, uh. A half of a five K. Uh, so you, two, two laps of that will produce a five K race for us. Uh, the designer, uh, uh, one of the major concerns that was raised by business owners, uh, Matt and Mark, uh, Rullard. On the design changes on River Street portion of the promenade. Uh, public works director Matt Hill worked with them and a design alternative was identified to move the location of the ten-foot wide multimodal trail to the east side of River Street, so the opposite side from that particular business. Uh, towards the Stent and Trust Building and thereby avoid any parking configuration changes or impacts to the property on the west side of the street. Remaining design will be retained on the pond side of the circum- circumfrental trail around number one pond. The design change adds two additional street crossings at what will be. Two signal-controlled pedestrian-controlled signalized intersections once M D O T, uh, does their reconfiguration in conjunction with this project. So we'll have two additional crossings, one at River Winter and Cottage and one at River High and Washington. Otherwise, the pathway would remain the same. These design changes will be brought forward for further review to the city council and again at the eighty percent design, uh, for further public input before they're finalized. Updates on the Atlantic Broadband, basic tier package update. I did get communications today from Fran Bradley, who's the director of governmental affairs. Responded to the city's inquiry about Atlantic Broadband no longer offering a basic tier package. Uh, that package can only be accompanied, uh, purchased by an accompanied, uh, bundled internet offer. Bradley responded today that per his legal counsel, Atlantic Broadband does not believe it is in violation of the, well, that should be buy-through provisions. Under the forty-seven, uh, U S C five forty-three subsection B seven. For basic tier service as A V B is not requiring the buyer to purchase any other higher-tier multi-channel TV such as H B, HBO or Cinemax. So what they're saying there is. They don't think the buy-through provision for the basic tier is being violated because they're not requiring you to buy. Multi-channel TV programming above the basic tier, but they are requiring you to buy internet. Internet and voice-over I P is not regulated under the F C C regulations for franchising agreement. But that's their stance on this. I've passed that response back to our legal counsel, uh. Attorney Plant, who did the franchise work. Um, he and his firm did the franchise work for both Metro Cast, now Atlantic Broadband, and the, uh, pending, and the Comcast agreement. He is going to glean through, uh, the F C C rulings on this particular subject matter, and I asked him to cap, cap his work at that. It'll be a very small amount of work for him to, to do that for this, the city. And I'll report that out, uh. To the city's subcommittee on this particular topic, franchise, uh, committee, and we'll see if the city wants to pursue this further. I also plan to reach out to, at a minimum, Ro- the city of Rochester, who has the exact same situation as Sanford. In that they were formerly served only by Metro Cast and then Atlantic Broadband. Comcast has built into Rochester now and is in the process of building here in Sanford. So I'm gonna reach out to them if they share these same concerns and see if there's an economy of scale as far as pursuing these matters. Also wanted to give you two positive announcements from the Parks and Recreation Department. They have two new offerings. The first is Keep Moving Midweek. Program on early release Wednesdays. If you have a student between the ages, uh, that occupy K two-eight that feels the need to get some fun activities in their schedule. Uh, they have a place for those students. This program begins immediately after school on early release Wednesdays and runs until five thirty P M. Costs us forty dollars a month and a small field trip every other month will be added. Youth will keep busy with a variety of games, play structure time, hikes, free play and trips. Uh, the supervisors are listed here as counting steps and working on, on some wonderful lifestyle goals. Join them in this adventure and you can contact Sanford Rec dot com for further information. Sanford Parks and Rec is also starting offerings of walk and talk. I, I laughed at this one. When my wife invites me to go walking, this is exactly what she does. She talks to me for the full-time more walking. So, uh, Sanford Parks and Recreation is looking for walkers that don't want to quit walking despite the forcing darkness and cold weather. Uh, with daylight savings time ending November seventh, darkness will lurk early and the skies will unleash snow and ice. With that being said, uh, they have secured a location for an indoor walking program at the Memorial Gym. So this is the start of the evolution of the Parks and Recreation Department, working their way into the Memorial Gym. And eventually taking that over from the school department and converting that to full-time, uh, community use as a community center. So they're gonna start the walking, uh, for all ages. They may participate. If you're fifteen or younger, you need to have an adult with you. Walking will begin on Monday, October eighteenth. Walking will take place Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday evenings from seven to nine P M. Where you can walk the entire time or show up for just twenty minutes. Uh, and they will walk on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday evenings through the month of March.
Is there a charge for that?
I believe there is no charge.
Excellent.
The quick update on what we continue to face with hiring, uh, staff within the city. Uh, we continue to struggle as all businesses are to hire qualified people for various positions. We're currently in hiring for three full-time dispatch positions, one part-time human resource generalist, assistant planner. Three crossing guards as a minimum, seven public works, equipment operators, three police officers. Uh, I put in parentheses certified because we believe we can hire the certified. Various seasonal labors and equipment operators, uh, in public works, parks and airport. We're looking for seasonal operators during the winter months. Four fire, four firefighter E M S positions, although we're review of that today. Uh, because of retirements and other pending circumstances, they are likely, we're going to hire seven. We just finished, uh, oral boards with eleven qualified people and provided that they, uh, pass the next level of fitness. And other, um. Testing, uh, we'll have a field of candidates to pull from. We have the, uh, the advertisement for the communications, uh, director has ended. We've picked three persons to interview and we start that on the twenty-seventh, the next Monday. And we're also still working on the Parks and Recreation Director. It has been, uh, advertised and the interviews are pending the week of October fourth. There's nearly thirty positions represented there. Uh, actually, there's, um. Three others, almost thirty-three, given the new count on the fire department. Like to remind everybody, the city of Sanford is an equal opportunity employer, has competitive pay and benefits and promotes a safe and supportive workplace. People who might be interested in any of these positions, you can find them on indeed dot com, the municipal association and other electronic websites. Some of those are advertised locally, uh, here in the Sanford Springvale News, some are not. And all these contacts, Stacy Howes, our H R director, and the contact information is contained herein. So I wanted to report out, there was an accident today. Uh, the Sanford Fire Department responded to a car accident on route two oh two earlier this morning. Uh, engine two was parked to protect, so they responded to a car accident there. They always park equipment to protect, uh, the responders that are, uh, servicing the, the accident. Uh, the crew was, um. So, there. Engine two was parked to protect the responding crew. Uh, that unit was subsequently hit by a personal vehicle traveling on route two oh two. The accident severely damaged the passenger car. Uh, they hit the city's parked engine and caused enough damage to engine two to place it out of service. The insurance carrier was notified for independent adjustment and the department is seeking a qualified repair facility to assess and repair. Engine two was our next unit to be retired within the current fleet. Uh, and it was scheduled to be replaced in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, and it was scheduled to be replaced in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So from the pictures that I saw this morning, unless they find some other physical damage that is not readily apparent from the photographs, I would anticipate we get this repaired and get it back into service as quickly as possible.
Did, did, can I ask, did no, did they not see the big red truck in front of them?
I, I don't have the police report yet, so I don't, I don't know any of the details, but.
I, I just keep thinking texting, texting, textings.
That was my first thought, driver in attention, uh, yep. So Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, I wanted to report on the regional impact. Uh, we have received the data for twenty-twenty, we receive this every year, um, on their economic impact within the region and the number of workers in our communities and associated payroll. Uh, it's very evident reviewing this data at the city of Sanford and its residents, one of the highest beneficiaries from the shipyard, uh, in the number of people employed as well as the overall payroll. This is why the city remains actively engaged in the joint land use study or the duelist around the shipyard to solve transportation and workforce development as well as workforce housing for this very important industry. City's been invited by the main department of transportation to apply for funds. I've sent that support letter in, uh, to fully fund the construction of a park and ride facility in Sanford dedicated to serving at a minimum, the current fifteen van pools are currently, are running out of the city as well as other car pulling from Sanford to the shipyard. And they now include in that, that study, uh, for the impacted area, other major employment sectors, uh, such as, uh, Huzzy Seating and Pratt and Whitney. Communications were sent to the, the main department of transportation and if accepted, the city council will review and consider authorizing the placement and design for a park and ride facility. Currently proposed to occupy that portion of the Emerson School lot, uh, that was not utilized by Cumberland Farms and was turned back to the city. We've even obtained permission to, uh, provide the access because the city retained an easement through that facility so that the traffic can exit to and from at the lit intersection using the Cumberland's property. Looking at the statistical impacts, uh, for the shipyard, uh, looking at the graphics here, uh, you can see that the civilian payroll was six hundred and seventy-one million dollars, uh, in the, in the fiscal year twenty-twenty, excuse me, the calendar year twenty-twenty. And that the shipyard had a total economic impact of nine hundred and forty-seven million dollars, uh, in twenty-twenty within the region. Looking at how it's changed over the year, you can see the green represents the civilian payroll. You can see two, two thousand and seventeen, uh, was just over five hundred million and two thousand and twenty, again, uh, at the six hundred and seventy-one million. So significant growth in that area. This is the chart that we always, uh, look forward to seeing, seeing, you can see that Sanford Springvale, uh, has the highest number of employees and also has a, uh, payroll of thirty-eight million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars that comes back to the residents that live here in Sanford Springvale and work at the shipyard. Portsmouth was the second highest at thirty-seven million five. See the other, even Kittery Port, uh, Kittery and Kittery Point is at thirty-six million. So when we work with the joint land use study, you can see that Sanford has more people working at the shipyard than work, uh, that live in Kittery and Kittery Point, which is where the joint land use study really started with. But so addressing the overall impacts of transportation, getting the workers to and from the shipyard, significant, uh, piece that we continue to work on. The last part of the slide shows the evolution of the civilian payroll from two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty. That concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Um, Council Tuttel, I saw your hand up. Did you have a question for the city manager?
Well, just on the rec department, I didn't know if we had any people that presently are employed, uh, for the, uh, are applying for the executive director's position.
Uh, I'm unable to report out the, the, the number and or the qualifications of the individuals. I haven't, I haven't pulled that pool of, of applicants yet. I know, uh, human resource has those, but I have not reviewed them yet with human resource.
Well, based upon what we experienced before, I, I, I think that somebody who's been working locally might make more sense than somebody who isn't used to the community comes in and doesn't find it the place for them and believes, uh, very shortly, I would hope we would prevent that from happening again.
Thank you, Council Tuttel, um, for that comment. Um, however, um, did anybody else have any questions from the city, for the city manager about his report? Thank you, Steve. Um, I'm going to go on to communications and presentation. Twenty-one dash four six five dash zero one, presentation of legislative sentiment in recognition of David Jagger. I'm going to turn that over to Representative Tuttel. I don't know if Mr. Jagger or if Council Representative Tuttel, you're muted.
Well, there we go, Madam Mayor. I, uh, I, I know that it's a pleasure. I talked to David's, uh, uh, one of David's family about putting, putting us in and I'm hoping you're there, David. You were my next door neighbor along with your brother Tom on Two Lennox Street and we live across the street from Lawrence Furbish in the neighborhood that we all grew up in. His grandfather, John Taylor, lived next door. I know that John coached the life, lifelong or coach and teacher at Sanford High School. There used to be a ball field next door and the person, uh, apparently the relative was in the Red Sox farm system and watched John bat and he corrected him and John credited him with, uh, with being a good baseball player for a lifetime. So it was a small neighborhood back then, Lawrence. But, uh, being known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives join in recognizing David Michael Jagger of Sanford, who is celebrating his eightieth birthday on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, we extend our congratulations and best wishes and be it order, this official expression of what is legislative sentiment we sent forth with on behalf of the hundred and thirtieth legislature and the people of the state of Maine. And it was, uh, sponsored by myself, Senator Dave Woodson of Waterboro, Matt Harrington of Sanford and Patty Hymanson of York. And, uh, you know, I, I presented a lot of these over the years, Madam Mayor, and it's truly an honor to do it for David Jagger because he's a person that doesn't, uh, want to get the lime, Mike, but he's done so much for our community. It's a great honor that this be presented to him, David. Happy birthday. I'm hoping you're there to say something, Dave.
I don't know that anybody's here, Representative Tuttel, but I think that they're planning to watch it after the fact. Um, they have all the information and know that it'll be available for them, unless someone's there and would like to speak.
Well, we'll tell them we're going to have the second birthday potty over Lawrence Furbish's on Clinton Street, right, Lawrence?
Okay, thank you, Council Tuttel. Uh, twenty-one dash four six three dash zero one, Chief Anderson is going to make a report for us on, for, uh, regarding Officer Everett Allen. Chief Anderson?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Requested that we bring this up for the full council's review. So I'll essentially read what we talked about at public safety meeting. Back on August twentieth of twenty-twenty-one, while traveling through Berwick in a marked police vehicle, Detective Allen noticed a vehicle on the side of the road with a passenger signaling, uh, for help. Detective Allen stopped and also who behind, traveling behind Detective Allen was Fire Chief Benati, who stopped as well. And working together, it was determined that the male driver of the vehicle was in cardiac arrest and the female, uh, his wife, passenger had signaled the, um, Officer Allen to stop. And, um, the efforts that Chief Benati and Detective Allen put together, they secured the scene, requested an ambulance, they started CPR. It were commendable and consistent with the finest traditions of Sanford for sure, uh, first responders. And what I thought was really a good example of how and why our responsibilities of first responders are not dictated by jurisdictional borders, but instead guided by honor, courage and professionalism and obvi- obviously a commitment to community service. So we thanked Detective Allen for his efforts and obviously we thank, um, Fire Chief Benati as well.
Thank you, um, Chief Anderson. Is, is, um, is the officer, um, on this evening or not?
No, he's not. I don't know.
And I think Chief Benati is on. Can't see you, but we, we thank, really, um, we appreciate your, your service, both of them, and can you convey that to, um, Officer Allen as well? And, um, can you also, would you mind giving us a brief update on the Citizens Advisory Committee as long as you're here?
Sure.
You don't want to, you can, just give me two minutes on how that you met. I know that you met and I'm assuming from the things that I've heard that it was successful. So as long as I've got you here, I'd rather not wait for another month to hear about it.
Sure, absolutely. So we, um, as you know, Deputy Chief Small put out the, um, the posting for applications for folks who wanted to be involved with the community group and we received about forty, forty, uh, applications from interested folks. Um, forty's a lot, but we didn't want to pare it down. And so we just created two groups initially with two different first meeting nights and they were Tuesday and Wednesday last week, which was the, uh, what, fourteenth and fifteenth, I believe, is when we met. And, um, it was a, a great group. The, the group we thought would probably kind of pare down on its own and it did. And between the two groups, we have, we have like twenty-one folks left. And so we're, we've scheduled our next meeting for the twenty-eighth of September. I believe it's the twenty-eighth. And we talked about what our mission would be and what, what our ideas and ideologies about where we wanted the group to go. We asked them to bring back ideas, one to three ideas or one to three problems that they wanted to address as a, as a group. And, uh, we felt that we would be able to exchange solutions or at least roundtable some ideas for solutions. We also plan on bringing in some of the first line supervisors and workforce as honestly, those are the folks who are going to be really, um, trying to solve the problems and having their ownership and, uh, investment in it, in the decision-making process is going to be really important. So we were very happy with the folks who came. Um, I think they were all happy. We had, uh, a good first meeting and, um, we learned a lot about some of the folks in our community and the concerns that they have within, within our community as well. And it's good to see that they were involved.
Thank you, Chief Anderson, and I apologize if I surprised you with that request because I did not ask ahead of time, so.
Oh, that's okay. I had the information right here.
Well, I know you like to talk about what's going on in the police department and we appreciate that, so, thank you. Okay, twenty-one dash four six zero dash zero one, presentation of final report findings from the Sanford Rail Trail Task Force. And Steve, are you going to introduce this or should I just turn it over to Dave?
I'd like to just turn it over to Chairman of the Rio Trail Task Force, uh, Mr. David Parent, who has done a incredible job with the task force, uh, as far as this is concerned, and ask him to do a presentation. Dave, I apologize, we didn't talk about what materials you want shared or how you want them shared, so if you give me some direction or I can turn share off or whatever you'd like me to do.
Uh, you, you can kind of do whatever you want. I'm, I'm just going to talk about it a little bit. I didn't, I didn't prepare a presentation. Um, I know you have a full agenda, uh, and, and to try and present a thirty-seven page report, I, I don't think you'd want me doing that tonight, so.
Why don't we turn off share and let, um, because I think Dave wants to introduce his task force and give us a little overview of what they accomplished and then what they hope us as a council to, um, take from it. So the floor is yours, Dave.
Boy, that, that sounds like a great plan, actually.
You like that?
So the, the report that I'm presenting the council with tonight is, really represents the collective work of the eleven task force members that participated. So I, I'd like to start off by introducing them. Many of them are here. Um, first, Jeff Van Julen, who is a past president of the Sanford ATV Club, representing the ATV community. Uh, Nick Taylor, also a past president of the Sanford ATV Club, representing the ATV community. And, and these two guys really have to be commended. Um, they were, they were certainly, certainly the target of, of the issues and, uh, and they were very helpful throughout the process. Uh, next we have Jim Rue from the Southern Maine Snowgoers, representing, uh, snowmobiles. Jim was a, a wealth of information on, uh, on grant programs. He's been there, done that for the snowmobiles for years now. Uh, Don Rue, also with the Southern Maine Snowgoers, a longtime member of the Sanford Trails Committee, representing the snowmobile community. Uh, Kristen Seer, who is the owner of Fast and Happy Bicycles in Springvale, uh, one of the, the founding members of Cycled Sanford, representing the cycling community. Lawrence Furbish, who is a member of the Trails Committee, also a member of the Malsum Way Land Trust, I, I believe, if I'm getting that right. Um, I know he's a member of one of the land trusts, uh, representing walkers and hikers. Uh, Katie Menendez Hall, who is a Trails Committee member, representing, uh, walkers and hiking, and Katie has, uh, has helped a lot of us, uh, not-so-young people out with social media side of things, and that has been much, much appreciated. Uh, Steve Mallon, who is a, a Trails Committee member, Sanford Trails Committee, also a member of the Malsum Way Land Trust, and he was representing the interests of the land trust. Gary Norman, who, uh, is a resident at Yorkshire on the Green condominiums, representing, uh, both the condo associations and the budding residential property owners. Uh, Brian DeRoscher, Parks and Rec Director, and, uh, and lastly, myself, representing the cycling community and, and chairing this, this group. Um, I, I thought it was important to go through them just to give you an idea of the, uh, the, the swath of expertise and uses that we had. Everyone actively participated. This was, this was just a great process. Um, so the Rail Trail Task Force was formed by Mayor Mistracchio with a specific and, and somewhat limited charge. We were asked to meet once or twice a month for sixty days, list and quantify issues associated with ATV use on the rail trail, propose and discuss potential solutions and alternatives the city should consider, and then to report back to the mayor and city council, which is why we're here today. Probably equally important was what we were asked not to do. Um, and, and this was the difficult part at times. We were asked not to make any recommendation on whether motorized use should be continued or limited in any way on the rail trail. And, and it was that limitation that allowed us to do the work that we did. Um, our goal was to work in a, in a collaborative and positive manner and utilize the resources of these members that I've, I've listed off that really represented all the stakeholders out there on the rail trail and produce a list of the issues that people are dealing with on the rail trail and some potential solutions. So we met five times over the course of two months and produced what, what I believe we all feel is a fairly balanced view of the issues and the potential solutions. What we found as a group is that we, we had more in common than we maybe thought at the beginning. Um, we're all people greatly value the rail trail as well as the natural areas that it provides access to. Anyone who hasn't used the rail trail and headed up towards Steering Pond just really doesn't know what they're missing. It's just a wonderful area. Um, I believe we, we also recognize that, uh, that if the various groups are able to work together, we can accomplish far more than, than working apart and, and arguing with each other. So the report itself is divided into several sections. It starts out, and this is how we started out in our meetings, by describing the various sections of the rail trail. There, there really are unique sections with unique issues and unique challenges. So then we moved on to discussion of, of the various issues, followed by a, uh, a list of the potential solutions and a discussion of the potential solutions and alternatives. The report also- The report also has an appendix with some very useful links. There's a link to, to the Governor's Task Force on ATV use in the state that has great information in it, the various grant programs that the city could access to help fund some of the, some of the solutions that we discuss in the report. And it also has something, something that Jeff Van Julen got for us, and that's a copy of Fort Kent, the town of Fort Kent's twenty-twenty grant reimbursement request that they actually put in. And as you go through that, I, I think you'll be surprised, as I was, to see the sort of things that, that they asked for reimbursement for. And it's given reimbursement rates, so although you only reimbursed a percentage, it ends up more than paying your actual out-of-pocket costs. You know, things like brush trimming, certainly enforcement. It's surprising. It's a long list. You get creative and, and you can get a lot of money out of these grants. And then the last thing in the appendix is our meeting minutes. So, as I said in the beginning, I'm not going to try to go through this point by point. We, we just don't have the time to do that. But I would like to call out a couple of the things that we all felt are, are key to the success on the rail trail. And, and the first and foremost item is that the city of Sanford needs to embrace the rail trail as a valuable asset owned and maintained by the city. And what we mean by that is that the city itself needs to take responsibility for things like routine maintenance, enforcement, setting policies on the trail, and do this in partnership with the Trails Committee. This really needs to be a city council initiative and directive, supported by the funding and policies that are necessary to accomplish the goals, along with assigning the responsibilities to the appropriate city departments, such as Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and the Police Department. Without those actions, the trail will probably continue to deteriorate, lose value as use increases and issues continue to increase on that trail. So there, there are funding sources, as I said, to assist in this in the form of annual grants. And in fact, the Police Department has already received one such grant, and has initiated officer training and enforcement details on the trail. Police Chief Craig Anderson, who spoke earlier, has actually placed the officer that, that he was talking about, Detective Everett Allen, in charge of implementing the, the, the program. Detective Allen rides an ATV, and he was interested in doing this, and he was interesting in, in hitting this up and making it work. I sat down and met with him. Great guy. He's, he's got a lot of energy, and I think he's going to do a lot with this. This is great news to us. Enforcement is one of the primary keys to success on the rail trail, and something we've struggled with forever. Someone would call the Police Department and be told that's not something that they deal with. They call the wardens or the state police and be told that they don't have time to deal with it. So there was nobody to report issues to, and now there will be. So, so this is wonderful. It's, it's a huge deal, and I, I can't thank, thank the chief enough. It's, it's very good. Let me see. So, as I said, I'm not going to go through it point by point, but I would like to call out one item that's in the report as an example of a success story. So, so probably the, the biggest complaint of a butters, residential butters to this trail is dust. In the summer, they say that they can't have a barbecue out back. They have to go inside and shut the windows after a hot dry spell because there's just so much dust. So the Sanford ATV Club took it upon themselves to try and resolve this issue with the Yorkshire on the Green condominiums. They purchased a dump truck load of an aggregate that's made from recycled pavement, and they spread it on this section, it's actually a private section of trail that runs behind Sherwin-Williams, and right next to some of the condo units. So they spread it, I'd say, over an area maybe three hundred feet long, just to see if it'd work. And according to the task force member who lives there, Gary Norman, he said it all but eliminated the dust issue, and has been a significant improvement. So this is a solution that potentially could work on other sections of the trail as well. And, and the good news here is that's just one tool in the toolbox. We have several potential solutions to dust listed in this report that couldn't even be used in conjunction with something like this. So, there's an example of, of, you sit back and complain about the problem, then you try to fix it, and in one weekend, you fix what, what people thought would never go away. So just a great success story. So, so I guess in closing, I just want to repeat that this task force wants the city council to take this up and move forward with this, to take up the important topic, the policy on the rail trail. We believe that there are viable solutions in this report, and for the most part, many of the costs are minimal. The Police Department is doing the patrols for not a whole lot more money. They, they could increase the patrols if they see the need, and it won't require a lot of funding. We hope that the report provides you with a roadmap to, to, to set the policy and, and implement the solutions. And we want to let you know that, that we're still available. Great resource, these members of the task force. And also, there's great resources on the Trails Committee that you can use as you move forward setting policy on the trail. I would be happy to take any questions, but I'd also like to give task force members the opportunity to say a few words if they wish, as long as that's all right.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, Dave. I will first call on, on task force members who might want to say a few words, and then I will call on councillors who have questions as well. But any, I see Lawrence Furbish, you have your hand up. Go right ahead.
Just really quickly, I just want to say, I think I speak for everybody in the task force to commend Dave Parent for his excellent job of chairing. I mean, he let us all speak our minds, he, and, but he did, he did a wonderful job of keeping us all on track. He was just a terrific chair, and I think we all really appreciated him. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. I think I'm going to put Dave in charge of everything. You know what happens, Dave? When you do something really well, you're going to have to do a lot more.
I know.
Any other? Do I see any other hands from task force members who might like to say a few words? I just, I personally want to thank you all because you did exactly what we asked you to do. And before I even call on other councillors, I just want to know that, I want you to know that I intend to take your report and help implement it because I think that it is a path to a solution to a problem that's been going on for a long time. And I think you're right, we need to take ownership of all of our parks and our trails and put the time and effort into to saving them or improving them and maintaining them, because I do think they're an incredibly important asset to our community. Councillor Tuttle, you have a question?
Dave, as far as the enforcement, I'm interested what the folks in Fort Kent did in the area of enforcement on their trails up there, Dave.
So, so they do it through the city as well. You know, what, what we found looking around is the only people who have successfully implemented enforcement has done it themselves. You're not going to get the Warden Service to do it for you. So Fort Kent, and actually the city of Caribou, which, which our own city manager is very familiar with, have side-by-sides, and they split duties on the rail trail up there. And they ride up and down it in a side-by-side, which probably the Sanford Police Department might want to get one of those eventually. It allows you to ride with two officers. So a little bit safer of a situation, you know, a little bit larger of a vehicle, safer of a vehicle. But they're doing it through their police department.
Thank you. Councillor Hanselman has her hand up.
I think I just want to briefly echo the mayor's comments about the incredible job that this task force did, and, and I, I did have to finish a cup of coffee reading all thirty-seven pages, but it was such a robust document and laid out really some excellent information and a path forward, I think, and you know, I, I hope that we really take it to heart and use it as a, a way to keep our trail such a amazing, you know, in, asset here in our community. So just heartfelt thanks to all of you for your time on that.
Any other councillors? City Manager? Oh, wait a minute. I see Councillor Markell has his hand up. Just a second, Steve. I'll, Councillor Markell, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thanks for all the hard work that went into this report and the meetings that you had, and I, I look forward to improved trail conditions and relationships with the landowners, as well as improved happiness of everyone trying to use the trail as well. So thank you.
So I'm going to ask the city manager, just for the benefit of the, the task force that's here listening as well as the public, what's our next step?
My next step would, would be to hire a Parks and Recreation Director and place this in his or her hands, right? That, that being said, I really appreciate the quality of the report that, that we have in hand now. It's, it's an excellent report. It's a great summary in there. There's some, some excellent action items in there. The, the one that I, I continue to stare at that was referenced in here is etiquette. That's probably the biggest difference that I see using the trail systems down here as, as a biker versus what I experienced up north in, you know, Fort Kent and Caribou area when biking the rail beds up there. The ATV users would actually slow down so not to create dust when they would go by, and most of them, because it was a Rooster County, would also ride side, side by each, side beside you and want to chit-chat about your bike, or where you're from, or who you are, and all this kind of. So that's the difference that I see. You know, the etiquette piece is huge here because I have not experienced that riding the rail bed down here. But there are a, a large number of actionable items in here that I believe we can, we can address, starting with this, this current fiscal year and going into next fiscal year when we do the CIP planning, as far as the appropriate level of funding and where that needs to go, as far as Parks and Recreation are concerned. With a stronger emphasis on the rail bed section itself. I also concur with the application for, for the grant funding. The Police Department already has obtained the funding and has trained two officers, got the enforcement out there on the rail trail. We can do that on a year-round basis. Familiar with applying for the cost reimbursement for grooming and such under that, for the summertime utilization of, of the rail bed systems that are out there. We contracted that in Caribou, because our grader was too large to get out on the rail bed. We contracted that to contractor that had the appropriate-sized equipment and could work on the surfacing, and we even brought various surface materials in to stabilize them against the erosion caused by the multi-use, i.e. the ATV. So, all of that's recognized here in the report. We can use this as a, as a roadmap to start moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, that, that's what I want to hear because I just don't want to, I don't want to put this on a shelf, just because we don't have a Parks and Director, Director right now. And I do think the council needs to understand that this is, if, if, it's like anything else, we either take care of these assets, or they cease, they, they aren't assets any longer, and then they're just things that just create issues for us. So I think we're really fortunate to have this trail and all of the trail system. I'm grateful to the Trails Committee for the volunteer work that they've done, but I think we're at a point now where we need to recognize that the city does need to take ownership and control of them to some degree. Utilizing volunteers and advisory and, and helping us as a, as a city elective board what we need to do, but making sure that we fund it during the budget process as well. So unless there's councillors that disagree, that's kind of the marching orders we're going to give the city manager. I don't see any disagreement. So, I see thumbs up. Thank you, Dave, again, and thank you to all the committee. We really do appreciate that. You did exactly what we asked you to do, and you did it in a way that we should all take a lesson from, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the members. They were, they're great to work with. Nobody, nobody sat on their hands and didn't say anything in this process. They were, they were all very active. Great group of people.
Well, we look forward to having your involvement as we go forward and keeping us on the right track, so thank you. Thank you for attending this evening. Okay, seeing no other questions about that, we'll go to public participation. Is there anybody wishing to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Oh, hang on, I see chat. Is that anything, Larissa? So, seeing no one who wishes to speak, we will go to public hearings. City Council will take public comments on the following. Twenty-one dash four four three dash zero one. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Prospect, Prospect Hill Holistic LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emery Street, Unit three zero five, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda. There is one item, twenty-one dash four 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 dash zero one. We will accept the consent of the agenda as, as written, if seeing no objections. And I do not see any objections, so consider the consent agenda accepted. Full business. Twenty-one dash four zero seven dash zero one. Second reading of proposed ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction, lagooning, and/or creation of ponds for city council action. And I think that there is a report back from the, I'll let Steve direct this before I ask for a motion, because this is the second reading. So Steve?
Yes, thank you. So at last week's zoning subcommittee, the, the topic of lagooning was brought up again. There was recognition given to concerns raised by Attorney Collins at, at the last public hearing on this relevant to tightening up the definition of lagooning as it pertains to mineral extraction and mineral extraction only. So the moratorium was sent back to legal counsel, and a revised version of that is in the packet this evening. The moratorium recognizes specifically that is an ordinance, ordinance establishing a moratorium on the development of lagoons, lagooning activity, and/or the creation of ponds undertaken as part of mineral extraction, and that definition is carried down through this entire moratorium, otherwise left in its form as was presented at the last meeting. So again, the, the concern has been raised about creating lagooning, which is the excavation below and into the water table as part of mineral extraction practices. The city currently has a standard, has called out for lagooning in its current ordinance, but it does not define lagooning, nor does it define the standards that have to be met. DEP has standards for lagooning, which takes a minimum of a year in order to implement because there's water table monitoring and quality monitoring that has to be done in order to apply for the DEP portion, the Main Department of Environmental Protection portion of lagooning. The city calls out for lagooning as a standard, but does not have any standards or definitions. Thus, the concern was raised in, in our work on the Mineral Extraction Task Force that this is one of the most grossly under-defined standards that, in the city's current mineral extraction ordinance, and it needs to be addressed. The harm that can, can come from inappropriate lagooning is called out and referenced within this moratorium. It's in reference to the NUDAM piece that was created by the main turnpike authority as part of the mitigations for the widening of the turnpike. Dave Parent is here and, and has spoke on that previously about the water quality issues that actually destroyed a city wellhead there, and had to be relocated and repiped and everything else. So for all of those reasons that are stated here in the moratorium, if the council carries through this and implements the moratorium, it would be for a one-hundred-and-eighty-day, a six-month period, unless earlier revoked, and/or unless extended by the city council. I feel strongly as Chair of the Mineral Extraction Task I feel strongly as Chair of the Mineral Extraction Task Force that the work that's ongoing with the task force now will address lagooning. It will address the standards associated with lagooning, if it's, if it's to be allowed in our community or if it's not to be allowed in the community, that will be called out as well. So that's currently under development, uh, with the Mineral Extraction Task Force, which I would like to, uh, speak out as, as being hopefully equally as productive as what you've seen from the Rail Trail Task Force tonight. The committee members there have been extremely contributory. Uh, we're well down a path of finding, uh, consensus on, uh, a complete rewrite of the city's mineral extraction ordinance, um, widely based on that of the City of Augusta's ordinance that calls out for many of the most favorable elements that we've identified. Uh, Director De La Valley, who's on the, uh, meeting with us this evening, has also done a comparison between the Department of Environmental Protection standards for mineral extraction, the city's standards, as well as the Augusta ordinance standards, uh, because from my gleaming of forty, forty-plus ordinances on mineral extraction around the state, we found that the City of Augusta had the most comprehensive and, uh, one that was the most reflective of where the city is going to recommend going forward with these. So I would ask for consideration of the council to, uh, consider passing this, uh, implementing this moratorium this evening to give us the time at the task force level to bring forward the recommendations to address not only mineral extraction overall, but most specifically this item, uh, of lagooning. Thank you.
Thank you Steve, do I have a motion to approve?
Move, move, we approve the, uh, uh, moratorium, uh, as presented this evening.
Okay.
Um, a motion by Council Stackpole and a second by Council Tuttle to, um, to approve with the changes presented. Any discussion, Council Martell, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, Steve, I believe there was, um, some representation at the last hearing, uh, meeting, where there were some concerns expressed, um, were all of those addressed in these updates? And are there any? Go ahead.
Yes, the predominant concern expressed by, uh, an attorney that was representing, uh, or has or is or may represent various, um, operators of gravel pits here in our community, expressed the concern that the, uh, the lagooning, as lagooning was not well-defined in our current ordinance. She was concerned that the lagooning could get into other aspects, other than mineral extraction. Those concerns were heard, those concerns were then, uh, raised by the, um, planning director to, with our legal counsel, and therefore this amended moratorium, which drills that down to, uh, mineral extraction only, as far as the moratorium on lagooning is concerned. But yes, the, the short answer is yes, I believe we have addressed those concerns that were raised at the last public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands up. We have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no other discussion, I'm gonna call the roll. Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you for your work on this Steve. And, and the zoning subcommittee, I know you worked on this as well, so thank you guys. New business. Twenty-one dash four-six-four dash zero-one. Adoption of a proclamation to recognition of Constitution Week to be signed by the mayor on behalf of Stanford City Council. Um, is Catherine Fisher on, Larissa?
I have not seen her name.
I have not either. So she may just not be on, I, I, this was, I think this is something that council has done in the past. They should tell you that I've already signed it. I'm gonna read the proclamation and, um, I, and before I do, I just want you to know that it was, um, presented in, on, uh, September eleventh at Goodall Library and that's where the original hard copy is, should be on display this week. I thought that was more appropriate than putting it upstairs in City Hall where we don't have a lot of traffic going through. Constitution Week proclamation. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine-fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Emory Mistraccio, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Stanford and the State of Maine, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the frameworks of the Constitution had in, that had in nineteen, in seventeen-eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have here and should set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this tenth day of September of the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one. Signed by me, Mr. Chief. And I just have to, um, it's kind of ironic that a document that two-hundred-and-thirty-four years ago didn't even mention women, was signed by a woman mayor and I'm presenting it in a, to a council that has three women, so thank goodness it was a document that allows for amendments, because otherwise we might not all be here today. So, things have changed a lot since the Constitutional Convention that produced this document. Next item, twenty-one dash four-five-three dash zero-one. Voted by the City Council for the City of Stanford, Maine as follows. One, that a capital acquisition project, the project consisting of the lease of a twenty-twenty-two Ford S-five-fifty Bronchief XL ambulance is hereby approved. And two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars is awarded to Gorham Leasing Group with a term of five years and at an interest rate of one-point-seven-seven percent fixed, an annual payment shall be subject to annual appropriation. And three, that the city manager of the city is hereby authorized to execute the lease purchase agreement and all of the documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the term of the lease does not exceed one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the economic life of the project. And five, that said lease is hereby designated a bank-qualified tax-exempt obligation of the city for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year under the provisions of Section two-six-five-B-three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen-eighty-six as amended. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Council Tuttle, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Council Hanselman. Steve, do you have anything that you need to just tell the public who might not have seen our last meeting, why this is on here like this?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, uh, Chief Anadi presented on the, uh, purchase of a new ambulance, as well as a Zoll twelve-lead defibrillator that you'll see on the next item. Uh, originally, uh, when we developed the Capital Improvements Plan, the, the unit that this is replacing was, is, is scheduled to be replaced this year, uh, it was anticipated that that was gonna be purchased, um, um, from a vendor as, as, as a combined package. Um, because of the difficulty in obtaining the rolling chassis portion of this, I see the chip problem that continues to persist out there in the market. The rolling chassis are very much unavailable. Uh, the chief went through the, um, regional procurement process, found, uh, a qualified vendor, uh, which is, uh, Autotronics here in the State of Maine, that had a unit that met our needs available. Unit, uh, that is, uh, under this purchase order, um, the two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, that combined purchase with the, the purchase of thirty-thousand dollars for the twelve-lead Zoll, uh, defibrillator comes out on the five-year lease purchase with this very favorable rate at one-point-seven-seven percent, at less than what the city had in its, uh, capital improvements budget. So, we had a combined element of sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars per year, each of the next five years in the CIP to fund this, this project. You'll see that this, this particular lease purchase is at fifty-eight-thousand-six-twenty-three per year. The subsequent purchase of the, the, the defibrillator will be at six-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen, so a combined cost of sixty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars or three-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight dollars per year, under the CIP budget that was allocated by the council. A very favorable progression through this process. Uh, this, the, the documents that are in here tonight, that sits on Larissa's desk, uh, that represents, uh, about an eight-inch stack of paper, comes from our bond counsel, uh, Shawna Mueller, who advises the city. Once the council authorized the purchase, Ronnie Champlin, our finance director, went out for a competitive award uh, for the, uh, lease purchase, which was now through Gorham Leasing. Uh, this is the terms and conditions under Gorham Leasing for this particular purchase. Uh, they were the most competitive at one-point-seven-seven percent. Uh, and all of this has been reviewed and authorized by our bond counsel, carries forward the recommendation for approval.
Thank you Steve, any questions from councilors? Seeing none, I will call the roll, we have a motion and a second on the table. Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. And the next item is a sister one to the one we just did, so could be, I will read it all out and then ask for a motion. Twenty-one dash four-five-four dash zero-one. Voted by the City Council for the City of Stanford, Maine as follows. One, that a capital acquisition project, the project consisting of the lease of a defibrillator with accessories is hereby approved. And two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of thirty-thousand dollars is awarded to Gorham Leasing Group with a term of five years and that an interest rate of one-point-seven-seven percent fixed, an annual payment shall be subject to annual appropriation. And three, that the city manager of the city is authorized, hereby authorized to execute the lease purchase agreement and all of the documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purchase, purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the term of the lease does not exceed one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the economic life of the project. And five, that said lease is hereby designated a bank-qualified tax-exempt obligation of the city for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year under the provisions of Section two-six-five-B-three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen-eighty-six as amended. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Council Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Martell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll, Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash four-five-five dash zero-one. Order to authorize the City of Stanford application for a twenty-twenty-two recreational trail program grant application for Moussum Way Trail Connections to improve trails near Stanford High School. Um, I'm gonna, I think Lee Burnett is presenting on this, Steve, this evening?
Uh, yes, yes please, I, I had skipped an item on you, so I'm with you now. Yes, so Lee?
Oh, oh, okay, is Lee here?
Don't believe Lee is here, um, but Brian Derocher is here and may be able to speak to this item.
Brian, would you like to present this then?
Um, yeah, I know a little bit about it, not much, I was, maybe some of the other, if there's any other Trails Committee members here that could chime in after. But again, it's, this is, project is, you know, trying to make improvements to the Moussum Way South, down by the new high school, off the sewer trunk line. There were two branches, I don't know if Larissa has the, of the diagram that Lee presented last week. So it's basically the, the two, uh, proposed trails, uh, in red is where the improvements we are looking to make. Uh, and I believe that the grant is in around the forty-thousand-dollar range with a contribution by both the Moussum Way, uh, Land Trust and also the Trails Committee. Uh, they're gonna come up with eight-thousand-dollar joint venture. So again, it's, it's just dressing up those trails, adding some, uh, crushed material in there, making them safer for both, you know, people walking, hiking, or even biking in that general area. I guess it's a project they've been working on, or trying to do for a long period of time, so this grant is available and, uh, Lee is applying for it.
Thank you Brian, um, yeah, the, the Property Subcommittee actually, um, heard this information and, and is sending it on to the council with their approval. Um, any other questions? If not, um, you know what, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Does somebody wanna move to approve?
So move, Madam Mayor.
To approve.
Motion by Council Tuttle and a second by, by, who would the second? Second by Council Hanselman, thank you people. Any more discussion on this? It's a real partnership and it actually is a very, it's a very valuable trail area, because I know the high school kids use them as well, the cross-country team. Okay, no further discussion, I have a motion and a second, I will call the roll, Council Martell?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, twenty-one dash four-five-six dash zero-one. Order to accept and authorize the city manager to sign an operating rights agreement between the City of Stanford and Black Sky Composites, LLC, to perform development of experimental aircraft as an FBL Category Nine, specialized aviation services operator at the Stanford Sea Coast Regional Airport. I will ask for presentation from the airport manager Allison Navia first before I ask for motion. Allison?
Good evening, my name's Allison Navia, I'm the airport manager. And what we have here tonight is an addition of a new aviation-based business at the airport. This is in keeping with, um, the, all of the ordinances for the city, so under Chapter Seventy, Article Three, we specify all the different types of businesses and all the requirements that go along with each one of those and what they need to do, um, to start operating at the airport. So Black Sky Composites, we have Israel Briggs, um, who is the owner and operator on the call as well and he can give, uh, a little bit of a more in-depth talk about exactly what the business will be doing there, um, in just a minute. It's a, as I said, a commercial operation, he's operating out of Hangar E-fifty, so that's over on the east side, near the terminal building. And this business will be designing, developing and modifying, performing light maintenance as well on experimental aircraft. Um, this is a specialized aviation service operation, as far as our minimum standards are concerned. Um, so it's a, a really niche type of operation that he'll be doing. The agreement is for a ten-year term, um, it, there also is an annual fee, so this is typical of other SASSO agreements that we have on the airport. Some other SASSOs that we have, um, are with Lifelight, also with Pine Tree Helicopter. So, um, these are, these are all very similar, but because it is a commercial type of operation, it requires approval by the city council. So all of those background paperwork items are all taken care of. We have certificates of insurance, we've gone back and forth, um, on the terms of the agreement and we're at a point to bring it to you for approval tonight. I'd like to invite, um, Izzy to do a little talk to give you a bit of background on his time at Stanford and what exactly Black Sky Composites is gonna do and how it fits into the economic development that's going on at the airport.
Good evening, how's my sound?
Excellent.
You're great.
Excellent, thank you, uh, good evening Mayor Mistraccio, City Manager Buck, uh, councilman members and, uh, um, airport manager Navia, thank you, Ms. Navia, thank you for, um, taking some time tonight to consider my application here. I appreciate, um, appreciate all the hard work that's gotten us to this point. Um, I'll keep it brief, I know it's a long night and there's a lot of agenda items. Um, my operation or business is focused primarily on light maintenance of aircraft, uh, particularly experimental aircraft and a particular niche of experimental aircraft that, uh, involves, um, a routan, uh, derivative. I, I don't wanna get into too many details, it'll probably make people's eyes glaze over, but, uh, one line of businesses, um, is, uh, doing aerodynamic- doing aerodynamic modifications and enhancements to those types of aircraft. I'll also be involved in some pure research around blown airfoil wings, higher RPM propellers, um, large helix angle and contra-rotating airflow mapping, et cetera, related to, um, uh, uh, coando effect research for vector and slipstream for externally blown airfoil designs. And you have to repeat that because there's gonna be a quiz after. Um, seriously.
I was just gonna say, you know what? That's already two, that was, you lost it right at the very beginning of that.
Well, here's the, here's the short version. It's, it's a lot of computerated drafting work, a lot of computer work. I'll be doing, um, composite propellers, like moldless construction inside and, and creating different designs and technologies. And, and part of that, part of the application for that post-research is for, um, improving the efficiency of, um, a lot of vertical takeoff and landing type vehicles that are becoming, um, very, um, uh, important in the emerging market and the next generation of the aerospace system. Um, so I find that particular space, there's some, there's some, um, uh, potential market opportunities, uh, there, and I've got the skills and abilities and background to kinda make that work. I'm transitioning from a different career, and so this business is a, um, a, a step up from a long history of, of doing design and work and, and building. Some of the pictures that Allison's showing on the screen, or somebody scrolling through there, uh, are examples of aircraft that I've worked with and aircraft projects that I've worked with, um, in this space. It's not a competitive operation with the Sanford FBO. In fact, I intend to create some collaborative, um, efforts with them. Um, I'm gonna offer them some, uh, capability to help them with composite technology that's, uh, being found on a lot of, uh, aircraft technology. And I'll also be bringing them business. I've got, I'll have visiting pilots that need things done to their aircraft, and so I'll be, uh, likely to have, uh, have that FBO, uh, selling fuel and services and oil changes and things like that as well. Um, you know, I would just, one last note. Um, I, I wanted to say that Sanford Airport was selected. Um, I've been to pretty much every airport in New England looking for a home for, for this operation. And, uh, I gotta say that, um, um, the airport manager in the city of Sanford has done an excellent job. There are a lot of cities out there that are just not doing a very good job with their airports. My home city of Concord Airport, uh, I just couldn't make it work there. Um, you know, they're just, it's just, um, it's just not very progressive. It's very, uh, difficult to, to operate there. And so, um, being able to come up to Sanford, I've been coming up for years and working there for years, and, uh, it's just, it's just the best facility in New England. Uh, it just provides the best services and, and it's a vibrant community. And I'm really excited about, um, about joining the, the, um, KSFM community to, uh, to continue, uh, my adventure in the aviation world. And, and again, I appreciate your, um, your, uh, willingness to host my business, and I look forward to serving the community and, and, uh, and the airport at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. We're glad you like Sanford Airport. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second, and then if council wants to discuss, we can do that. Do I have a motion to approve?
A move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Councillor Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Martel. Discussion by the council. I saw there were a couple of hands. Councillor Tuttle, you had your hand up. Did you have something else that you'd like to, to, you just need to ask or?
Well, I had a bad joke, Madam Mayor. I said, having spent eight years in high school, I understood what Mr. Briggs was talking about.
Really? Then you passed the test. Okay, Councillor Tuttle. Is there anybody else that has any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second on the table. I'm gonna call the roll.
Mayor, I think, um, City Manager Buck had had a question. I saw him raise his hand.
Oh, see that? I just, yep, Larissa was trying to tell me you asked because your thing doesn't work, Steve. Go ahead.
These are the kind of toys that, that, uh, you know, make, make my, my mind twirl. So, yeah, no, I didn't understand what you were talking about. I, I get the concept, but where, where's the nose wheel on this canard that I'm looking at?
So that's an excellent, uh, question, and I, I'll actually be happy to show you one of these canards we have at Sanford Airport owned by, uh, Damon Meyer. Um, the nose wheel is, um, is a, is a genius design. It, um, it extends and retracts, um, but because the aircraft engine is in the rear of the aircraft, you can drop the nose, put it on the pavement, and it won't move, not even in a thunderstorm. It's, it's a really nice, uh, efficient way to park the aircraft. Uh, it also, um, improves efficiency. This has an updraft cooling design, so air flows up from underneath the belly into the engine and cools the engine with air flowing through the back. So with the nose wheel retracted, that improves airflow into that, that, that underbelly scoop underneath the aircraft. Um, a lot of fi- I've, I've landed at airports with this aircraft and, uh, raised the nose wheel, and I'll see the line boy running out with a, with a fire extinguisher. You're thinking that the aircraft nose wheel is collapsing when in fact I'm just retracting it to set it down in a parking position, so it can be entertaining sometimes. And I'll be happy to show you at the airport sometime if you'd like.
I'll be up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion by the council? Do not, oh, I see Councillor Martel has his hand up.
No, I, I think this is great. Um, that looks like some really interesting technology and, uh, hopefully we get a chance to, to see your hangar sometime. I, I'd be really interested in seeing your operation.
I, I, I'm, I'm very transparent and very open door. I, I, I enjoy the company and, and just be prepared that, um, because it's interesting, a lot of people show up, so I have a tendency to put people to work. So if you, uh, if the conversation lasts more than five minutes, you'll probably end up with a wrench in your hand. So.
That's not a bad thing, right?
No, not a bad thing. I'll even show you, show you how to do it, so it'll be fun.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I will call the roll. Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Sorry, yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. And good luck, Mr. Briggs.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your help.
Absolutely. Okay, twenty-one dash four three one dash zero one. Order to ratify a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Sanford Public Works Unit, Local 481, Council 93, ask me retroactive to the period of July first, 2021 through June thirtieth, 2024, as set forth. Do I have a, a motion to approve?
A move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Tuttle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Martel. Steve, I know we've had, um, discussions about this in executive session. Do you have anything to add or something you'd like to say about this before we vote?
No, I just, I very much, uh, appreciate the council's support on, on this contract. There was a significant amount of work that was done on this contract, this, this negotiation period to, uh, recognize, uh, getting, getting the wage basis there at the Public Works Department to a competitive basis, uh, within the region. We were significantly, significantly behind in equipment operations and especially in mechanics. Uh, council recognized that and gave us the authorization to negotiate accordingly. Uh, there was also a lot of change as far as the, uh, work schedule is concerned, uh, significant amendment to that. There's actually three derivation of a work schedule as a pilot program over the next three years that we'll be looking at at the end of the three-year period to see which has worked best in various types of seasons for the city from a, an efficiency and a response, uh, perspective. Other elements that were addressed in there was, uh, a change to the, uh, clothing stipend as well as the tool stipend. Also made recognition for some, uh, workers' comp changes in there should, uh, a worker become injured. More favorable language covering them during that fourteen-day period between the time that the entry, uh, might have occurred and caused a work outage to the time that workers' comp typically will, will pick up in that fourteen-day period. Uh, this unit being the last unit that did not have that language. So, um, I'm very, uh, satisfied with the work product that's, that's in here. And again, I thank the council for, for their work. The union has ratified, uh, their, their review of the contract on the September fifteenth, and so it now awaits ratification by the city council.
Thank you, Steve. Um, comments or questions by the council? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present.
Madam, Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Stackpole.
I, I, I just, I just wanna emphasize the point for the people listening in public that the council has received significant information about this contract, details, so on and so forth. Uh, it's an important issue, and I don't want anybody in the public to think we're, we're kinda glossing it over. Uh, we've already been extremely well-informed in executive session, uh, and are prepared to vote for this, so just wanna point that out.
Yep, I think that, um, people need to understand that sometimes when these negotiations are going on, we're informed in executive session, and neither party can really talk about it until you finally have the documents that we're signing here tonight, which now is a public document. So, we voted twenty-one dash four four five dashes zero one. Order to discuss and vote on approval of amendments to the city's epidemic and pandemic policy as presented. Steve, you're going to present this this evening?
Uh, yes. So just, uh, uh, by way of background, the city's epidemic and pandemic policy was first enacted on March seventeenth. Uh, that's very significant. So the governor, um, announced on March fifteenth, uh, this, the declaration of a state of emergency as, as it pertained to COVID-19. Uh, city administrative staff dug in for two days and wrote this, uh, the document, the epidemic and pandemic policy that was accepted in an emergency meeting by the city council on March seventeenth. Uh, that then carried forward until March thirtieth, uh, whereby the city council had another emergency meeting and adopted changes to that. Uh, that adopted in the federal, um, regulations for the, uh, federal family, Families First Corona Response Act was amended into the document. Document then carried us forward to this current point in time, uh, made revisions to that with my human resource staff, uh, follows in the, in the current areas in response to what we're now experiencing with the, uh, D variant, COVID-19. I'll just cover the red highlighted areas. The first element that we're seeking amendment on is employees must immediately notify, uh, the employer. So if you, if you have.
Steve, do you wanna screen share with that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was. Yeah. Okay. All right, so the first area of modification recognizes, it strengthens the employee's need to self-isolate and not report to work and report to us that they have, uh, risked exposure, uh, thereby not coming into the workplace and, and risking exposure, becoming a close contact with a coworker. Strengthen that language in here, uh, such that if you knowingly come to work, uh, having experienced symptoms, uh, and/or from, uh, known contact, not self-report that to us, you could, uh, be in alignment for disciplinary action. Strengthen that. Uh, the next area is the start of, at the end of July of this year, the US CDC brought forward further recommendations, uh, to return workers back into the workplace, uh, if they have had either a close contact or other exposures. And they differentiated between those, uh, people that are vaccinated versus those people that are not vaccinated. We, we're seeking to adopt those, um, recommendations, uh, guidance from the US CDC into our epidemic and pandemic policy because we've recognized that we can, uh, keep people within the workforce and, um, return them to the workforce a minimum of four days earlier. And for those that are vaccinated in cer- certain circumstances as a close contact, uh, may occur, not have them report out of work at all. So the first amendment is, uh, for the presumed or confirmed cases of coronavirus, uh, employee or immediate family member, if a medical official determines that employee is presumed or confirmed to have the virus, or the employee tests positive for the virus by home rapid or PCR test, and the employee is required to be out of work a minimum of ten days since symptoms first appeared, twenty-four hours with no fever. Uh, other symptoms of COVID-19 are improving, cough, shortness of breath. If testing positive and non-symptomatic, you may return to work ten days after the positive test for COVID-19. Previously, that was a fourteen-day period. They've reduced that down to a ten, especially with the implementation of the rapid, uh, home test, uh, and the PCR test. The other, other element, uh, by our legal counsel in here, this, the use of Family Medical Leave Act, income protection, sick time, workers' compensation and vacation. There is no change to that section of the pandemic policy, but it does for the first time recognize that when you are, Family Medical Leave Act is unpaid leave. Employee is implemented there. If an employee chooses to use unpaid leave, uh, does not have or has utilized all of the employee's accrued sick or vacation time, the employee may request to be granted unpaid leave without pay. Uh, so we did not have the, the choice in there before. We cannot mandate that you use your accrued benefits when you're going under the FMLA. Uh, so therefore, by pursuant to legal counsel, we have that language change in here, uh, that allows the employee to choose to be unpaid or to use their accrued benefits. Here's the most significant change in here, because you can see the amount of, of red, red line that's in here is on-the-job exposure. To determine that a close-contact exposure or contracting the virus was a workplace exposure is determined after investigation by the department manager and human resource director. We're, we're making that determination that is, that is the HR, uh, director and the department manager that will investigate the close-contact exposure while at work and make a determination if the employee has been exposed or not. Thereby, the city's, uh, and, and/or the workers' compensation insurer, they, they do those, uh, uh, we file a first report of injury on any exposure that takes place, uh, inside of the work, work environment, uh, that the city will do the following. So A, if the employee who becomes a close contact, I didn't hear, while in the workplace and in the performance of their work duties shall, if they're fully vaccinated and exhibiting no symptoms of COVID-19, they will be required to be placed out of work but must be masked indoors, they will not be required, but must, must be masked indoors in the public space. Employee must be tested between three to five days after close-contact exposure. City will provide a rapid test if available. If negative, the employee no longer is required to mask and no further action is necessary. That's pursuant to the CDC guidance at this point in time. They're not fully vaccinated and not experiencing symptoms, and the employee is required to be out of work for a minimum of three days and must be tested between three to five days. If negative, the employee may return to work and mask indoors in the public space through day ten after exposure. So you can see that you're getting, as opposed to the prior fourteen days, you can return that person back, uh, as soon as three days with a negative test, remain masked for that ten-day period. They test positive with, on that three-to-five-day period, then the employee must remain out of work for subsequent diagnosis for COVID-19 as affirmation of exposure, and they follow the prior protocol. Now, the city will not require the use of accrued benefits. This is a significant change. City will not require the use of accrued benefits during the three-to-five-day period of being placed, uh, out of work and will pay for the lost time or supplement to workers' compensation according to either the personnel policy or the collective bargaining agreement as applicable. Previously, the pandemic policy, uh, provided that the employee must use their accrued benefits. Uh, the, legal counsel has advised us against that. It's a workplace exposure, uh, the preferred methodology is for the city to pick that up and not force the employee to use, um, their accrued benefits because of the workplace exposure. Item B in here is employees who are determined to have been exposed within the workplace and in the performance of the work duties and are exhibiting symptoms or subsequently diagnosed with COVID-19 or a test positive by rapid test between days three and five should be placed out of work until meeting the following criteria. And then it goes no different than somebody that's been exposed outside of the workplace. It provides for the ten-day period symptom-free, twenty-four hours with no fever, other symptoms of COVID-19 are improving, and they must test, uh, and if testing positive and non-symptomatic may return to work ten days after the positive test for COVID-19, again pursuant to the most recent guidance by the US CDC. The city will not require the use of accrued benefits during that ten-day period of being placed out of work and will pay for the lost time or supplement to workers' compensation according to the personnel policy or the collective bargaining agreement as applicable. The return to work also was redefined here. Employees, uh, placed out of work as a close contact or positive COVID test must not return to work until reaching the minimum requirements, uh, for presumed or confirmed cases stemming from outside work or on-the-job exposure. Inside work are met or otherwise medically cleared by a medical professional directive. We did leave in here the additional step there. There could be medically, you could be medically cleared prior to the ten or previous fourteen-day period. If you're medically cleared, we'll allow you to come back. You're not able to, to obtain a separate medical clearance and all the, the previous protocol that I had, uh, stipulated would pertain to you. The city, uh, the last amendment in here is that the city reserves the right to place the employee out of work in involuntary quarantine under these, these conditions. So we've, we've had that occurrence before. Our employees had returned from, from an area of known exposure, we placed them out of work in involuntary quarantine under the conditions as, uh, specified here. So that was the last of the amendments in there. I ask for your support and passage of this so we can implement these amendments. Uh, it serves the city well to get workers back as rapidly as possible, yet knowing that we've done so in a safe, uh, fashion pursuant to US CDC guidance. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Steve. Um, I know we don't have a motion, but, um, I guess I'm going to ask for a motion first and then the council can discuss.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle to approve and a second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Discussion by the council. Are there questions for the city manager? The subcommittee did review this. Counselor Martell.
Yeah, I just, um, had a quick question. Maybe you, maybe you touched on it. Um, but, um, exposure outside of work, um, can you go over that again?
Yep, Detroit here. Presumed or confirmed cases of coronavirus in an employee or immediate family member. This is a section that pertains if you're exposed outside of work.
Okay. And are they required to use unpaid leave?
No, they're not required to use unpaid leave. They have the choice. They can u- either use their accrued, uh, benefits, or they can file for Family Medical Leave Act.
Okay. Um, I really, personally, I, I think that we ought to practice universal precautions and treat vaccinated and unvaccinated the same, um, because we're, we don't fully understand breakthrough cases and how that works. Um, but that's my personal opinion.
Are they only- Discussion by any of the council. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yeah, I'm just, um, is there a separation in this section? That's what I, that was probably one of the things I was going to ask, but, so if you're exposed outside of work, are you, is there a, the way you're treated currently, if you're vaccinated versus unvaccinated, it doesn't seem to be there.
If you're exposed outside of work and you've tested positive-
Right.
-and this is the protocol that you, that you follow. So there's no, there's no differentiation there. The differentiation starts with, um, on-the-job exposure, close contact exposure.
And this is the same for schools. Yeah.
Thank you, pardon?
Just so you know, I believe this is the same for schools and students who are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So go ahead, Steve. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, so it is. It's, it's, it's where we relied upon the latest guidance by the US CDC. So we're not, we're not making these amendments in a vacuum. We're not making these amendments, uh, by our own opinions on this. We relied on that US CDC guidance, uh, for this. Now, again, if, if you, even if you're vaccinated, if you test positive, uh, you're, it's no different than somebody that's unvaccinated. You're back to that ten days, uh, since symptoms first appeared and the twenty-four hours with no fever, such and to that. It's only, the biggest amendment in here is previously, we would put somebody out for as much as fourteen days for a close contact exposure. Now we have the advent of the rapid test that we can utilize. Somebody that's vaccinated, they can mask, uh, for that short period of time, for that first three days until we can test them. If they test negative, they can unmask. They test positive, then we're reverting to the other protocol.
So one thing to keep-
If our workforce, since the majority of our workforce is vaccinated, this is a significant change for us to not force employees out for as long a period of time as what we previously had to.
Do you have another question, Counselor Martell?
Yes, um, so with, with any of the tests, there, there is a false positive rate. Um, has that been part of that, any discussions around, um, retesting or confirmation testing?
So if you test positive with the rapid test, we're going to send you for a PCR test, deemed as, as being the most reliable. If you test negative with the rapid test, we're not going to subsequently send you for a PCR.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're-
To, to address your concern about the false positive, right? So if, if you get a positive, it could be a false positive with a rapid test. Therefore, we're going to send you for the PCR. But we're not, we're not aware of any false negatives with the rapid test.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Counselor Hanselman, how's your handle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add, part of the discussion, uh, at the public safety meeting where a subcommittee, this was discussed out also, just lied around the fact that not only are we following current CDC recommendation with this protocol, but also that it preserves our workforce and allows, uh, us to stay intact in terms of city services, um, you know, within the CDC guideline. So if we didn't put this in place, we'd have potentially more outages. So I think that's just an important factor to take into consideration.
Um, there's a question that was asked, um, by someone, um, Allison Naevi. The question is, is the city paying for all of this testing?
Yeah, so we have, uh, we have purchased, probably some of, one of the last forty-eight PCR tests, I mean, excuse me, rapid tests, known on the face of the planet. We have those in inventory now, currently seeking to purchase more, uh, but they're currently unavailable since the President Biden made his announcement. Uh, the PCR test is at no cost to the employee still, uh, by federal, federal guidance. So the city, there would be no cost to the employees for either the rapid test or the PCR.
Thank you, city manager. Um, Jonathan, you have your hand still up? Counselor Martell? Are you all set?
Sorry, all set. Um, just, just to clarify, Steve, though, there is, there is a false negative rate, um, on any of these tests as well, just so you're aware.
Thank you, Counselor Martell. Is there any other, um, we do have a motion and a second on the table, I think. So is there any more discussion by the council? Being, wait, hang on. I hope not. I'm not missing anything. Okay.
It'll be interesting what we have to change if new ever really gets going.
Uh, please, bite your tongue.
I'm trying.
We're going to do the best we can to get everybody vaccinated and, um, protected to the best of our ability. And out of the hot, keep them out of the hospital. So let's, I'm going to call the roll. Counselor Martell?
No.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is five in favor and one opposed. Motion passed. Uh, okay. Twenty-one dash four-five-two dash zero-one, review and draft action plan from independent investigation of planning and development process complaint. I'm going to turn this over to you, Steve.
Okay. Uh, so there's a bit of background in here that on May eighteenth of twenty-twenty-one, Kristen Collins Esquire presented a letter and a statement to the Sanford City Council during a public presentation, behalf of several Sanford businesses, expressing the difficulties with the complaints about the Sanford Planning and Development Review Process, which is the letter. City council directed that an independent investigation of the planning and development review process occur to re, to review those complaints. Uh, the, um, the report is attached here. It was produced by Perkins and Tom, Tom, Thompson, um, by attorney James N. Cassaficus. Cassaficus, I'm sorry. What I've done for you here this evening is the, um, the report as presented, uh, but it's a fifteen-page report. Been able to compile this down to nine, as far as the memo was concerned, but reviewing this again today for tonight's presentation, I, I do not find the ability to abbreviate it any further than the one I have here. So again, I'm, I'm going to go through this report. The council can, uh, ask questions at any point in time or, and/or make comment. You know, May eighteenth, uh, the element that was of concern was presented by attorney Kristen Collins, representing a number of Sanford-based businesses, expressing their concerns. City engaged attorney, uh, James Cassaficus has a non-affiliated counsel to perform an independent investig- investigation of the complaints as filed. We didn't use Bernstein Shore because Bernstein Shore advises the planning department and codes department and myself in, in addressing issues as far as permitting is concerned and/or other elements. So I asked for a recommendation. Our attorney, Philip Saucier at Bernstein and Shore, he recommended James Cassaficus, uh, under the pretense that he does land use, uh, work as a municipal attorney. He formerly worked for, uh, main municipal as a, uh, municipal attorney. Currently still does practice, um, land use regulation and advisement, and he is known for producing independent reports for, for other, uh, municipalities along this area. The attorney was selected, uh, due to his prior knowledge, as I've referenced here. Um, and he is, report, uh, is attached here. It was submitted on August fifth of this year. Important to note, this investigation was not a personnel investigation, but examined the review process in addressing the concerns raised by the complaints listed within the report. The report is broken into thirteen topics identified by attorney Cassaficus, from the letters of concerns, uh, and from the extensive interviews that he conducted. So I note, I'll note here early on in the process, and I'll note it here, uh, at the end of, of, uh, this review, uh, all of that review process, uh, the attorney looked at planning board meeting records. He looked at the video records. He interviewed administrative staff involved in the, the processes, uh, such as our planning director, our code officers. He interviewed the chair of the planning board, and he interviewed, um, all of the persons that had submitted letters of concern, uh, via attorney Collins. So the part that's left out in the full report that's not in my memo is all of the, uh, dialogue from the interviews themselves. I've snipped that out for this evening. So I've brought forward the topics. Uh, let me, I'm going to grab my, uh, Word version of this. Give for me to review for you. For you. So the first topic was, um, state of the city's land use ordinance. So the findings and the recommendations I'm going to read for you, those are findings and recommendations that were produced by attorney Cassaficus. So when, when you see I find, that is the attorney that did the investigation on behalf of the city council. His first finding, uh, he found that the frequency of land use ordinance changes and the delay of updating those ordinances online is a real issue that hinders compliance with enforcement of those ordinances and is a problem both for the business community and for city staff. While Ecode, now Ecode is the vendor that, uh, houses our codes as far as the city is concerned. They do that nationally. Uh, they're well recognized out there. So while Ecode recently updated the online zoning ordinance, uh, with three years' worth of amendments, this only made it current as of the end of two thousand and nineteen. The attorney's first recommendation is that the online version of the zoning ordinance should be made current and kept up to date. It should be, be a priority for the city and presumably one of the tasks of the city clerk. Is, is, uh, if differences in ordinance formatting between the way Ecode drafts and the planning and development drafts are delaying updates, then this issue needs to be resolved and, uh, and/or alternatives considered. To the extent the subdivision ordinance needs updating and integration into a larger unified ordinance, this may be helpful to the public and business community, but only if it also is kept updated. So under the action plans, this is the first, uh, draft of the recommendations, uh, that I have as far as addressing each of these, uh, findings and, um, recommendations by the attorney. So the first is administration will submit all chapter two-eighty and associated updates since twelve-thirty-one nineteen, currently in PDF format only, to Ecode for full codification immediately. Planning and codes, administration will consult with Ecode to ensure numeration of the updates remain compliant with all ongoing work for automation of the permitting process as under development for the past two years. So that's, that's a mouthful and it's a very significant item in there because codes has been working with Municity, also a subset of Ecodes, on automating, uh, on an electronic basis, the, the, uh, initial permitting, so that you can do that online. Now, I'll be addressing that in several areas in here tonight. So it's very important that the codification, uh, as that goes into Ecode, stays in alignment with the work that's been done in Municity as far as linking Municity and Ecode together.
So, Steve, can you just- Can I just ask a question though about that? So that PDF format, that's what the, the issue is really in slowing things down? So that's going to go away? Just clarify that.
So, so right now, if you do a search in Ecode, uh, not searching the latest derivations that are housed in the PDF format, it references that those amendments are there. It doesn't search that portion of our code.
So everything's going to be in Ecode up to date as soon as possible? That's what you're kind of saying?
Correct. But they have to resolve, uh, the co, in the codif, codification process of that, they have to resolve the enumeration so that it stays linked to the Municity, work that's been done in Municity, uh, so Municity and Ecode are linked together. So ultimately, you see here in later, uh, in the report, it's always been conceptualized from as far back as when Jim Gollnak was here, that we would, we would have a day where you, as a business applicant, could come to the city's website. You want to do a particular business type of activity on a particular parcel of land or whatever that activity is, and you could go to the city's website, you could identify the parcel of land, identify what it is that you want to do there, and the appropriate permitting documents and the steps that you're going to have to do and what you're going to have to comply with would come up for you and be made available to you. All of that work is nearly complete. But part of the biggest challenges of getting this rapidly codified will be, uh, ensuring that that enumeration stays compliant with those two processes. Second piece of this is that planning is currently working with the planning board and proposed updates to currently recognized outdated subdivision ordinance will continue as an identified priority for the, for the ensuing year. Areas of deficiencies were already noted and pending clarification. So for our timeframe here, I put actively pending with the planning board and to be submitted within the, the next year. The third piece, uh, which will be stated in here several times over, is the technical manual with standards has been completed, completed as it, it's in its full draft. It's still pending submission for adoption post a planning board review, and there's still administrative review of that ongoing, but the document is substantially there. It's a very extensive document, and I'll talk more about the technical manual, uh, later on in this process. And I would envision that by spring of two thousand and twenty-two, we should be able to come forward with the city council adopting the technical manual. The second area of topic that, that was brought up was, uh, the area that the attorney identified as the planning staff unnecessarily delays responses and obstructs communication. Here, his findings were that there are no clear findings here. Both these, both these businesses and city recognize there have been communication delays in the planning and development process, but each cites different reasons, largely the other party, for the delays. the other party, for the delays. As far as recommendations by the attorney, he, he said improved and more timely communications by all, together with post-pandemic reopening of government and businesses, changes in city personnel, and greater planning department use of checklist in application review may help to address this issue. So under actions, the first item I listed here is staff replacements are actively being addressed. The time this report was, um, being compiled by Attorney Cassiafikis, uh, we, we had, we were in the process of losing our administrative assistant within the department as well as our assistant planner. So there's significant staff deficiencies at that point in time. So we have a new administrative position that started on Monday, uh, and we're still advertising for an assistant planner. Our first round of, of applicants produced no viable, um, candidates there, so, uh, oral boards were deferred. We've gone back out and reposted that, that critical position. Second item is checklist, checklist are part of the city's purchase software package of Municity that I referenced earlier. Codes has completed their work for Municity and is working, using the, using Municity internally, as is the city's clerk office for licensing, and that's tied into the city's financial software, Munis. Codes expects the full permit process, i.e. the electronic checklist, to be implemented by the end of October. Municity will then connect the online permitting to the city's codes via Ecode. I put timeframe to be determined. So that's the second reference to the continued concern that the codification of all of the amendments that have been done to chapter two eighty is compliant with the work that's been done in Municity. The one that's in Ecode, the two systems tie. But please bear in mind that Municity and Ecode are the same software vendor. Same vendor owns both of those products. If it is one of those large case studies that they're doing, getting the two linked together as we, we previously had envisioned. Third area that was raised, uh, from the letters and was, uh, reviewed by Attorney Cassiafikis is that the planning department makes rules and cites precedent where ordinances are perceived to be lacking, directs actions not provided for by ordinances. In his findings, he found that despite the frequency of ordinance changes, there is a need for certain practices or precedents, such as regulation of over excavation, codified as ordinance standards to ensure these are evenly and consistently applied. Under the recommendations for this section, he stated that the zoning ordinance should be amended to address reoccurring technical issues, at least as to gravel pits, so that the city planning staff and planning board cannot be accused of making up the rules, and applicants can know what is expected. Under actions, um, council has created and directed the mineral extraction task force that I'm currently chairing to update the city's mineral extraction ordinance. So this was specifically, uh, you know, the over excavation was referenced in there. The task force has already worked through amendments to the standards in two eighty, uh, dash fifteen, dash six, further refining and delineating the standards necessary into specification standards and method and means standards. That is a very large, uh, adaptation that will be coming forward. Task force is reviewing the definition of these standards across multiple sources, which include municipal and state. As recog, uh, municipal and state has recognition is granted of the lack of specificity in many of these sources to include the city's current ordinance. Those revisions are slated to come forward for city council review and potential adoption in March of two thousand and twenty-two. Going to reference in here a number of times the, the ongoing work of the task force. This started, uh, shortly after the, you know, investigation was called for, but I can't say enough positive about the work that the task force has already gone through in reviewing standards, uh, in comparing main department of environmental protection standards to our current standards, as well as to the more, more, what's deemed to be more favorable structure in standards held within the city of Augusta's, um, mineral extraction ordinance. Second item in here is that other construction standards associated with the development have been reviewed and compiled as the city's technical manual. That manual currently is compiled as a hundred and thirty-two pages in length. Uh, I'm pulling right from the purpose of the technical manual is stated in, within the manual as, "This document has been written to provide technical direction to residents, businesses, utilities, developers, engineers, architects, consultants, contractors, inspectors, stakeholders, and the stewards of the city, stewards of the city with the intent of realizing a modern set of standards and practices through which to consistently better the municipality." In the technical manual, the areas that most pertain to the concerns raised within this, this investigation of the planning and permitting process are standards for streets and roads, pedestrian, storm drainage, excavation and backfill, destruction inspection, public safety standards, landscaping, stormwater management, development near wetlands, utility standards, street lighting, site development standards, solar energy development, and many others. This review can start as soon as possible with an anticipated adoption as spring of two thousand and twenty-two. The reason I put that in there, I would anticipate that the technical manual comes forward at the same time that the significant amendments to the mineral extraction, um, portions come forward, uh, and I'm less, I'm less versed on how quickly we can have the subdivision amendments come forward. If that can come forward in a similar timeframe or not, I still need confirmation on. The fourth area of the thirteen that were raised was reliance on in-house staff for analysis of technical issues rather than outside expert peer analysis. I think this is one of the larger topics that was tackled by, um, the attorney. He states, "I find that there is a misunderstanding by some in the business community. The practice in most main municipalities is to require peer review of engineered plans prepared and submitted by or for applicants in the land use review process. The reason for peer review is twofold: determine if there are errors in the application and to assist the planning board in understanding the application's technical aspects. Peer review of engineered plans may be conducted by in-house municipal engineers or by outside engineers. Engineer's plan or option is not entitled to complete deference because an engineer prepared it. Applicants engineer may misread or misapply an ordinance, statute, regulation, or technical standard, may make an error, or there may be a difference of opinion among, among, should be amongst engineers, so there is a legitimate need for the city to obtain an independent professional review of engineered plans." Recommendation to the city is that the town's reasons for developing greater in-house engineering capacity was to be more business-friendly by providing less expensive in-house engineering review. Business to the extent it accepts such peer review at all is not convinced that staff has the technical expertise, time and experience to efficiently conduct in-house engineering reviews of application, and believes that these reviews should be more frequently sent to outside third-party peer reviews. Business community and planning and development staff should try to reach consensus on a policy that addresses when technical engineering issues should be, receive in-house peer review and when they should receive outside peer review. This should increase certainty, process, and decrease the length and expense of review overall by reducing argument over peer review, which is a repeated concern voiced by the business commenters. Action items to address this. First, the city continues to build upon and offer in-house technical review to aid the business applicants and expedite the process in areas such as electrical inspection. We do both residential and commercial. We're one of the few communities out there that have an in-house electrical inspector to do commercial that does not have to result, uh, resort to and wait for the state electrical inspection to, um, have that occur. We have in-house fire, uh, fire marshal that does fire codes and plan review, uh, and we also conduct site development, uh, in-house. City seeks also to gain technical capacity from the main department of environmental protection to perform stormwater permitting for major site development on the completion of the comprehensive plan and the acceptance of our technical manual that are both ongoing." So I put the timeframe to that as being ongoing. City has also delineated the lack of technical capacity in-house to inspect mineral extraction operations. Has implemented a contract with Wright Pierce Engineering to perform all site inspections and future license inspections for mineral, mineral extraction. We've done that delineation already. That was, that was even prior to the mineral extraction task force being formed. The planning board work had, had, uh, identified that, as had the site plan, uh, review work. Uh, so a contract, um, an RFP was put out. There was a significant amount of work done administratively on obtaining the current contract with Wright Pierce, and there's even a backup contract should there be a conflict of interest with Wright Pierce or a secondary engineering firm to be able to perform that inspection work. Is viewed that, uh, going forward, the mineral extraction committee, uh, I believe will make a recommendation that there will be a licensing process for the ongoing operation of mineral extraction operations that will be annually inspected by this outside contracted firm. Uh, that would, that, uh, we have come to a consensus that we do not have the sufficient technical capacity to perform in-house. And both, uh, administration and the industry have identified the, um, capacity for having, uh, the, the technical, uh, benefits of having, um, a qualified engineering firm inspect all of the operations on an annual basis as to the linking of the impacts of the industry, uh, as they cover a significant amount of landmass within the city. City has also eliminated the use of escrow accounts because there's been concerns about the cost of the in-house, uh, review that's utilized. So we've eliminated the use of escrow accounts for city staff review time, and we have gone to a flat fee structure based upon the size and complexity of the project. Recognition is given that planning should use peer review as currently provided more often on the more complex applications. I think that as a city, we have avoided using peer review to save the developer money in some instances. That has caused consternation as far as, uh, the overall permitting process. I'm making a recommendation that there may be more times that we call for outside peer review on certain complex projects. The fifth area that was raised pursuant to the letters was that the planning department is resistant to ideas, uh, of the applicant or outside consultants. Findings, uh, by Attorney Cassiafikis is, uh, it is difficult to make any findings on this issue. The applicant's consultants and city in-house or outside reviewers may disagree over approaches, whether standard or innovative, to technical issues, and this will require the planning board to make a case-by-case assessment of the credibility and weight to assign to the competing opinions, but this is a central function of the planning board itself. I underline that. However, where reoccurring issues such as over excavation, again referenced, arise, it may be time for the zoning ordinance to be amended to provide standards rather than relying on precedents. The recommendations made, all parties should approach technical questions and issues with an open mind, but the applicant bears the burden of showing that the application meets ordinance statutory standards and that the planning board ultimately is the judge of the credibility of technical consultant witnesses where there are competing expert opinions. So under the actions, I listed standards, uh, which are a reoccurring theme here, are addressed under topic number three, uh, and will address this, this element. So that gets back into the work of the task force, identifying the standards where the specificity, specificity needs to be and where it should be left in methods and means, meeting the standards, as well as what those standards need to be. The technical manual will go a long ways towards addressing, uh, those elements that were previously, uh, less well-defined within the city's ordinance. Secondly is that the planning board may call for more peer review when consultants and in-house or city contracted technical review are questioned. So the timeframe here is action will be affirmed with the planning board upon submission. Item number six was that last-minute technical issues and alleged ordinance violations raised by staff memorandum to the planning board. There were specific references in here, um, and those were drawn out during the interview process, but the findings were, are as follows. Comments about last-minute violations go both ways without any clear answer. However, I find that all parties are having difficulties related to the city's compressed review timeline, causing late-received information that cannot be adequately addressed. Staff is having difficulty preparing and updating memos for meetings. Planning board members don't receive review memos until the last minute, and applicants and interested parties are unable to respond to the last-minute comments. City's desire to speed up the review process to be more helpful has led to a review, to has led to a review timetable that is causing trouble for all participants in the process, meaning both business and city staff. So the attorney's recommendation recommends that, uh, I strongly recommend that the city rethink the timing of its review process steps. For the last five years, I've been working with multiple subdivision, uh, with multiple subdivisions in a site plan review process for a major redevelopment project in Westbrook. That city's planning department seems to have found a reasonable way to schedule reviews that allow adequate input, comment, and consideration by all. So in recognition of this timeframe, because I was here when it was compressed, uh, I was aware of what the issues were at that point in time, and I was aware of what the city council at that point in time was trying to achieve. I'm also aware of having observed, uh, what these impacts are, made the following recommendations. Uh, recognition is granted of the observed impacts of the compressed timeline. I recognize what's being said here. I, I recognize that as far as an issue. Although a developer may request an extension of time, it does not eliminate ongoing difficulties with the compressed timeline for review, especially that timeline between site plan and planning board being just twenty-four hours apart. So continue, I recommend that they continue strong application of the pre-application process, which we did not have prior to. I recommend that we continue to, uh, rely and strengthen that pre-application process that I believe is serving us extremely well at this point for, for city staff as well as for the developers. That we strengthen the site plan review process by not reviewing incomplete submissions, place a thirty-day review slash response period for the applicant and staff to address insufficient submissions, conditions, waivers, or amendments prior to planning board receipt for review. So this will be addressed also as well as the mineral extraction updates are concerned, uh, well as, uh, pending amendments to our subdivision review ordinance. I'd like to recognize at this point in time that I think the city staff, um, bends to incomplete submissions far too often, uh, in the guise of being business-friendly, not delay the applicants. Um, I would like to see a harder stance of if you cannot submit a complete application, that shouldn't be reviewed. But I see the review of incomplete applications as doing nothing but causing, uh, discontent in the review process. Therefore, I would, uh, if the city is going to continue to strengthen its business-friendly, uh, processes in recognition of what the business community needs, then the business community also needs, the developer needs to recognize that they need to make an appropriate incomplete application as is called for.
Steve, can I ask a question here?
Yes.
So will this action plan that you have for this particular issue address the issue of planning board getting, um, late, um, materials, like literally the night before their meeting, lots and lots of stuff that's been done just like the day before? And honestly, if I was a planning board member, I would have a hard time digesting that. It's not like that's their full-time job.
Right, and that's, that's my recommend, recommendation to, to put a thirty-day period in between, uh, site plan review and planning board review.
So that's going to take care of that. I just want to make sure that it's not just, because I get that it's the, um, incomplete submissions that's messing up that other process, but for me, it's, it's like, we have to recognize that, um, and, and to be fair, I think the planning board take, has to take some responsibility for asking what they need. I mean, I think that they were probably- I mean, I think that they were probably, it seems that they were probably all feeling overburdened with getting this last-minute material and being able to digest it and then act on it.
Well, I don't, I don't know as I would reference it as last-minute material. That is the compressed timeline that was, that is put into the ordinance, right?
Right.
Not that administratively, they're submitting this last minute. This is the compressed timeline that we operate under.
I get that, but in effect, what's happening, and that's part of the problem, is that they're getting information the night before they have a meeting, which means if you have a full-time job, when are you going to spend the time to go through all that material? You shouldn't, and I'm not saying that they're not doing their job, because I would just find it very difficult. I get those submissions now, and I look at them, and I think, man, I don't know when I would go through all that. So I hope that we take care of that, because I would like to feel that the planning board is able to do the best job that they can. And I think that that 30 days hopefully will take care of that.
On putting 30 days in there as a recommendation, obviously, we'll need to work with the planning board to get their full opinion on this as well, and then bring that with the city council as we seek to make amendments to this timeline.
All right, and I see Deputy Mayor Hurl, he's handed up. Go ahead.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna look at something where, a process by which you're dealing with incomplete applications, I think you need to set a timeline for staff to notify the person that the application's incomplete, so that it's, you know, not 30 days later, your application's incomplete, you know, some, some, because I know that's easier to do, because they can flip through the various documents and see what's in there, what's not, so. So that some sort of timeframe so that people know whether they missed something, because our, our, what we have for plant, like for rules, regulations, is, it can be confusing, so someone might not know that they've missed something, so. Do you see what I'm saying, Steve?
I do, and I see very well-documented responses going back to applicants as far as what is missing from information, what is incomplete, what needs to be completed in order to pull that forward with no response until they actually come forward yet again. So shame on us for hearing those applications that are incomplete. Strongly recommend we just not. But I don't believe you're going to find other municipalities that will bend as much as what we have to try to get applicants through in an expedited fashion when they're submitting incomplete information to us. All right, the next item, next area, area seven that was raised was that the planning department stirring up opposition through mailing of notices. Finding by the attorney was like all land use ordinances, the zoning ordinance has notice requirements, generally requires applicants to provide the planning department with a list of abutters within 250 feet of the subject property for the purpose of mailing notice of public hearing. Whether the city mailed additional notices is not clear. The Pepin situation involved discussion of a larger legislative matter rather than an actual permit application. This area of concern really goes to one particular application more than the others. That's why that name was referenced in here. As far as recommendations, he recommends that the city post and mail the required notices as provided by the zoning ordinance using the applicant abutter list provided. The action item that I noted here is that the city staff already follows the abutter notification process as part of the application, utilizing the city's GIS system as provided to the developer. Provide that tool to the developer, the mailing list is produced, the notification goes out accordingly. I'm putting this as being completed. I find no violation of that in any way, shape, or fashion. Item eight was that the planning director could be more proactive and obtain advice from the city attorney in advance. Findings by the attorney investigating was none and recommendations were none. As far as action items that I listed here for myself, the city staff regularly, emphasis regularly utilizes legal counsel for advice, non-typical application areas. City, as the city manager, I regularly review the utilization of legal counsel prior to and post-utilization and do not find a lack of its use as it relates to the permit application. I regularly, I sit bi-weekly with the planning director. We go over all of these elements. I get the detailed information from our legal counsel that spells out every hour spent on what project it's on, what the reference was, what the request was. I see and I review all of that information, and I know that both planning and codes utilize our legal staff extensively as it pertains to the permitting process. Item number nine is that the planning board, is that the planning board is too deferential to planning department staff. Findings here, the comments about the planning board's reliance on staff predictably go both ways based upon the commenter's affiliation, business or city, without any clear result. Recommendations are none. As far as action, in the request that the city legal counsel provide an educational session to the planning board on their function as a review body in examination of the preponderance of technical materials and making findings of fact related to the compliance of a given application permit. So I'm suggesting this just simply as a technical update to the planning board. I think it would serve them well for our legal counsel, Phil Soss here, to come in and give them further education that they've had before, but further education on how they rely upon technical expertise in review and making their findings of fact. You look at the type, the amount, the sheer volume, and the technical, the technical nature of the sheer volume of information that goes before the planning board, and the planning board people are people just as yourself that have been appointed by the council from within our community. They are the peer board of review for these various, in most cases, anything that goes to the planning board can be highly technical. So they're in a very difficult position to review, to review and rule upon extremely technical information. So I believe an educational session with our legal counsel could be very productive for them, assisting them going forward in the future. We should be able to do that anytime after January of 2022. Development period, if it ever slows down at this point, historically would slow then. We haven't seen that over the last two years, given COVID or not, but that would be a better timeframe for the planning board to receive that technical educational session. Item number 10 is the length of project reviews, particularly mineral extraction renewals and reviews. That was a concern that was raised. In his findings, he found that all parties are having difficulties related to the gravel pit relicensing process. Recognition granted there. Is five years between gravel pit permits sufficient, or should the internal, or should the interval be longer, such as 10 years? That's a question mark by the attorney. If almost half of the relicensing applications are taking approximately two and a half to three years to process for a five-year renewal, is there a problem? Question by the attorney. Do other uses in the city undergo periodic relicensing? Question by the attorney. In his recommendations, he states, I recommend the resumption of discussions between gravel pit owners and city staff that had begun before the pandemic struck. These might identify gravel pit license renewal improvements and/or changes that could be incorporated into the zoning ordinance. I understand that the city council is reviewing potential changes to mineral extraction ordinance provisions to allow it to revise and approve renewals unless there have been changes to the site. This might take some of the strain off of the planning staff and planning board, where the five-year renewal cycle for each gravel pit has led to several lengthy reviews. So in there, I'd like to recognize for action items, the first one is that the established mineral extraction task force, as implemented by the city council, has made and continues to make significant headway in this area. Task force consensus and direction of ordinance amendment is to emulate that of the City of Augusta ordinance in the areas of. First is to eliminate the five-year permit in lieu of an initial site plan with operations manual. So as is currently the consensus of the committee, you would have to obtain your first site plan via the new ordinance, after which your operations manual will provide for your continued operation, which would then provide for an annual licensing process as opposed to this five-year permit. Mineral extraction would then be licensed annually as in other businesses, subject to an annual inspection by an outside contracted engineering firm, which we've already identified to have under contract as being Wright Pierce. License violations would address individual areas of non-compliance and make only those subject to enforcement. The violation is widespread on operations, then, then, and only then, the delegated license authority of either the planning board or city council that has not been made as a recommendation yet. We found it interesting that in Augusta, the planning board is the licensing entity and has the review and approval authority. The licensing authority would revoke until corrected. All inspected operations and compliance would no longer be subject to the current five-year permit and application process. These are the recommendations that I believe will come forward for March of 2022. Before I move off this topic, the reference was made here to almost half of the relicensing applications taking approximately two and a half to three years. I asked for verification of that within our own department, and I don't find that to be the case. This is a chronology of the mineral extraction reviews from 2015 to 2021. Rock Bottom had approximately four months from the date of the original submission to record of approval, but it took them an additional 26 months to meet the conditions of approval. They were permitted in four months. In Ast on Daylight Avenue was approximately five months from the date of original submission to record of approval, took an additional six months thereafter to meet the conditions of approval. Libby Pit, which is a 2016 application, took approximately five months from the date of the original submission of record and 11 months to meet the conditions of approval after permitting. Libby Pit in 2021 took less than three months from the date of the original submission to a record of approval with no conditions thereafter. The Pepin Burnier permit, and I'm going to spell this out, this is one of the largest complainers in this package, took approximately 19 months to complete the application from the original submittal date to the planning board approval, and all of those processes were listed out here. Again, Pepin in the Agway gravel pit took approximately 20 months from the time of the original submission to the time of planning board approval. Processes are listed out here. Note the number of times found incomplete, found incomplete, found incomplete, found incomplete. This is my reference. But if they can't submit complete information, we shouldn't be reviewing. In Adventures, gravel pit approximately 31 months from the date of the original submission until approval. So I don't find, but for two examples here, that the two and a half to three years is a accurate statement within the review. The eleventh item is issues over performance guarantees, strong recognition given here. The attorney finds that the city is uncertain and inconsistent as to what work the performance guarantee encompasses, that also there is a misunderstanding among some of the business community as to the purpose and intent of a performance guarantee. Finds that the city is not internally clear over how it interprets the performance guarantee provision, both in terms of what it covers and on what must be provided to comply, that this lack of clarity may be confusing the business community. He also finds that not all of the business community accepts this basic and common concept, and that the gravel pit industry especially at times conflates the separate concepts of a performance guarantee, security to guarantee the satisfactory construction of required improvements, to other public improvements such as roads, utilities, and other infrastructure to be turned over for public ownership at the end and maintenance, and a closure or decommissioning guaranteed posted to secure the adequate filling and grading of the gravel pit when mining ceases. Recommendation is that he recommends that the city clarify what is meant under the zoning and subdivision ordinances when a performance guarantee is required to secure the satisfactory construction and installation of required improvements. The term required improvement should be defined, but from the context of the ordinances, it would include public infrastructure required by the ordinances, such as public streets, sidewalks, utilities, drainage, and any other improvements intended for public ownership and maintenance, and perhaps also private roads that will be used for access to permitted dwellings to ensure actual access is built. Under the action items, when I look at our city code, which is 75-69 improvements guaranteed, state's performance guarantee shall be tendered for all improvements required to meet the standards of these regulations and for the construction of the streets, storm auto-management facilities, public sewage collection, or disposal facilities, public water systems and erosion and sedimentation control measures. It identifies the elements to be encumbered within the performance guarantee, but the standards are either vague or difficult to pull from the code. The technical manual, again, currently ready for adoption, contains the standards for all of these elements. Code 79-69 should be amended to reference the standards in the technical manual once adopted. Foster produce said elements are those to be encumbered within the performance guarantee. My recommended timeline is that by March of 2022, when chapter 275 subdivision of land and chapter 280 zoning are proposed for amendments for subdivisions and for mineral extraction, that the reference to the technical manual take place at that point in time, linking those together, getting rid of that ambiguity as to what elements are going to be wrapped into the performance guarantees and how we cost assess those. Then the last item is what process improvements would you recommend? So this is the investigator's final findings and recommendations. First, he finds that the claims of government corruption, unethical practices, and malicious intent are over the top and unhelpful. He also finds that the delays in communication and response times may have been more common in the past year due in part to the COVID-related office closings, working from home, and in part to staff departures and retirements. Such delays were common throughout government and throughout the economy in general during the pandemic. More importantly, he finds that the planning and development changes, in some cases going back a decade or more, that were intended to promote a more business-friendly atmosphere may have had unintended consequences. Believe the largest reference there is to the compressed timeline. Further notes that many of the complaints are from gravel pit owners or operators, that some of the complaints in the letters submitted are in identical or at least similar language. Residential development moves into suburban and rural areas where natural resources, uses, and activities such as mineral and gravel excavating traditionally have been conducted, conflicts can arise between residential and business interests. That's where we always see the largest number of conflicts, where two, where two zones merge that have conflicting uses. Business operations that previously were tolerated may be objected to, but zoning ordinance provisions may not address this conflict to all parties' reasonable satisfaction. This is all the more reason for gravel pit owners and operators to meet with the city to discuss and negotiate ordinance amendments to bridge this gap. As I've referenced, I believe we have very strong headway under the mineral task force form. I want to thank the people that are contributing to those efforts because they've been outstanding in bringing forward consensus. He further states, however, gravel pit owners and operators are not the only business owners who have expressed concerns about the planning and development process in Sanford. Several departments and a surveyor also provided comments. Whether the letters presented with the letter is a limited expression of discontent is difficult to say. Business owners interviewed Business owners interviewed say that other business owners or operators would have come forward but feared a negative impact on their projects. City staff say more projects than these were approved by the planning staff and planning board without problem or complaint. That's a very strong point of recognition here, and I'll wrap that up when I get to the end here. Staff is attempting to accomplish many improvements at present. Director De La Valley reports that her office is working on technical standards manual, development of a unified land use ordinance with zoning, site plan and subdivision provisions, and an online database to track applications and approvals and online application filing capability. There are signs that cooperation and progress could ease the gulf between city businesses and the city's planning and development staff. Business community says that it wants predictability and consistency in the development review process. City staff wants to move beyond the "we're too busy to do it right" position they find themselves in by updating ordinances to make them more modern and user-friendly and by preparing guidance documents such as the technical standards manual. Perhaps these efforts, along with the resumption of the discussion by the city in regulated gravel pit industries that had begun before the pandemic, can help identify areas for consensus on changes and improvements in the ordinances and review process. Perhaps a new look at policies that were intended to be helpful for business but may not be, such as frequent land use ordinance amendments, enhanced in-house technical review capacity, a compressed planning review schedule can help identify process improvements. He again recommends looking at the review process the city of Westbrook has established to see if Sanford might find ideas there for planning and development review process improvement. Under my actions, I wanted to recognize that there are no claims of government corruption, unethical practices, and malicious intent that were deemed over the top and unhelpful. No further investigation and any form of wrongful doing will be undertaken. Further, wanted to recognize that business friendly should not be construed as meaning fast or rushed in the development review. Joint meeting that we had between the zoning committee, the city zoning committee, and the planning board, we had talked about that, but we never really got to fully flush that out. Examination of the city's former timeline inclusive of the mandatory pre-application process with an emphasis on the full vetting of the project through site plan, the 30-day period of response prior to the planning board process, major site developments, the leading recommendation. Establishment of and positive cooperative work by the mineral extraction task force towards a major overhaul of the city's ordinance for mineral extraction is addressing the majority of the current process to permit standards for site and operations and ongoing inspection and compliance. Is anticipated that proposed ordinance for March of 2022 will address the most pertinent issues raised by the gravel pit owners or operators prior to their future renewals. And four amendments to Sanford codes and standards are currently under development in the areas of the technical manuals, subdivisions, unified land code, mineral extraction, and online permitting and tracking. Pumination of these efforts is slated for March of 2022. Last footnote that I put in the action plan here is that I found it unfortunate that the investigation did not expand to interview the major site planned applicants that have expressed their appreciation of professionalism, the city's codes and planning department, as it relates to the development permitting process. Many have expressed recognition of the professionalism, efficiency of review, and ease of permitting. Commonality found amongst this category of applicant is that they followed the ordinance, made complete submissions prior to review, and addressed any element of conditions in a timely manner. Last elements were not observed as being the case for the applicants displeased with Sanford's current application process. Permitting, licensing, and the land use zoning are about the protection of property rights in an ordered society and should not be viewed as punitive to a new applicant in our business. Administration will work to alleviate such animosity as it currently seems to exist.
Steve, excuse me, I just want to make note of the fact that it's now 8:56, and unless there's objection from someone, we're going to finish this item. I see no objections, so we will continue. Thank you, Steve.
The last element I listed in here is business friendly. In the last workshop that we had, we never really got to what the definition of business friendly is. We wanted to offer value as to that, but administration was not asked in that workshop. So a statement that I had previously listed in here is, "Business friendly is for staff to convey the value of the applicant applying for a permit, which is based upon the common interest regulation of clearly articulated rights of all properties designed to preserve and enhance the well-being of all businesses, individuals, and property owners within the municipal bounds." That the interpretation and application of all city ordinances and codes are well-articulated, applied equitably and efficiently, and that the staff is viewed as conducive in processing and application of permitting. That's my definition of what business friendly would be for the permitting and application process. So the clear articulation of our ordinances, the standards for which must be met for an application, I give strong recognition that we have major deficiencies in our ordinances that need to be addressed. I think we've come a long ways into where we know where to address those, and we have actions ongoing to address those. And I see one of the largest conflicts that brought this forward was gravel pit or mineral extraction permitting processes. I will say it one last time, the mineral extraction task force and their work, I believe, will mitigate the overwhelming majority of all of those elements that previously were a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Before we go on, I just want to ask you one question. If we sign on to this action plan, do you think that it would be appropriate to schedule as part of that approval a date that you will report back to where we stand on these items that you have agreed to work on?
I would be happy to report back on an ongoing basis on the individual items in here as they're accomplished. You know, I'm looking at a note from Sue Cody as far as permission to E-code as of 6/30/21, and they're working on finalizing amendments to issue the next supplement. So there's no deficiency as far as being able to address these items. My primary concern with meeting the timelines that I've spelled out here tonight is the current workload upon the planning department and the lack of the assistant planner position that was originally put in there to address the staffing deficiencies and to be more business-friendly by a more rapid processing and interaction process as far as permitting. So that's one of the largest focuses right now. We've got to get that assistant planner position filled. We may have to make some amendments as to how we're advertising that, how the position is defined. Going to be working with the planning department and HR to identify those, and I'll bring those forward if any of those necessitate council actions. That is one of the most, that's one of the most key elements. Achieving this timeline on all of these major elements is getting that sufficient staffing back within the planning department.
Okay, so yeah, so you're going to be reporting back on an ongoing basis then?
Absolutely.
I'm most interested in this whole E-code piece, which seems to be kind of like the linchpin to making sure that, you know, information can get out there. I mean, there's no plan for pulling planning out of that piece. They're going to have to fit themselves in and stop the process that was holding things up. Is it safe to say that? Because that was a piece that I read in here that I think made it. I mean, I tried to look at ordinances, and I couldn't figure out where stuff was. And I figure if I can't do it, then the average person trying to do it can't do it either, so.
Yeah, the difficulty is the codification, the enumeration of current chapter 280 in comparison to how E-code is going to codify that. So we've got to make sure that that links to all of the prior work that's been done on our online application processes, and it doesn't break our system. That's a task for E-code and Municity, which is one company, to get that codified so that the systems link up.
And there's nothing that we're doing in the planning department that's holding that up?
Not at this point, no.
Any questions from councilors? Councilor Stackpole.
Yeah, Steve, you know, I imagine you've been waiting a period of time for this integration to take place. I guess that's my question. How long have you been waiting? What's your anticipation for the integration, if you can answer that?
That was conceptualized when Jim Goleck was still here, almost 10 years ago. He conceptualized the day where you'd be able to go online, put your pointer on a parcel of land in a particular tax map and lot, and then select what it is that you wanted to do on that, and the system would spell that out for you, provide you with a checklist of what you need to do to build a residential apartment building on this particular lot, or put a hairdressing salon on that particular lot, or something of that nature. That day is very close for us now, so. Code Office or Jamie Cole has been working with Municity internally, making those amendments and doing the preparation work for that. They're using the system internally now as part of their tracking, permitting, and online work. It just has not been linked yet to the E-code system. So they're working with Municity to link it to E-code to then finally bring that forward for that conceptualized piece. I think will put us out there in the forefront as far as ease of permitting.
Right. Well, my next point was, so we are, as a city, pretty much on the leading edge of this software development or integration?
I believe we are, especially for a city our size, to have done that work with Municity and E-code. That's why Municity was selected, was because the city was housed with E-code and it's one company. It's their task to make sure that that integration goes forward seamlessly.
Well, it's just my quick observation over, I guess, this whole thing at this point, since I opened my mouth here. I would like us all, and I mean all, involved, which is a great deal of people, to look at this as an opportunity, not to look at this negatively, but to look at it as an opportunity to make the process better. And I think that's certainly been my goal involved with zoning, and I believe other council members can speak up, but I believe that's been the mission of the council, to make this experience a more positive experience, a more streamlined experience, and so on and so forth for the people that are involved in the system. And so hopefully this presents an opportunity for improvement. I think what you presented, Steve, is not something bad. I think we've got some ideas on where we can improve things as we move forward. So I see this as an opportunity for improvement in the whole process. The final thing I have to say is, as far as those uncompleted, incomplete applications, I don't know if you've talked to developers or not. I mean, there really should be a way for them not to be able to submit something that's incomplete. I mean, I think we've all run into that, doing something, filling out some kind of form on the internet where if you don't put this in and you don't put it in the correct format, then you don't go forward. So I'm just wondering if that's something that could be explored, or maybe it's already been explored. And that's my final comment question.
The recognition that I have in that area, Councilor Stackpole, is it's not that the, so they make an initial submission, and it's reviewed within the planning department. Any element that's missing or has not been submitted, that is then noted and given back to the applicant. That's where the problem starts. When the applicant wants to come forward for review, or they come forward for review, and they haven't finished those items as noted, that they've already been put on notice for. Nobody would ever fault a developer, or especially somebody that doesn't do that as a business, for maybe not getting all of that information in the first time. But once it's been identified, and then they fail to submit it, that's where I see the rub starts. We'll go back and we'll look at the Westbrook ordinance as referenced. I'm very curious to see what we can learn from their timeline and their processes and such under that. The other part that I didn't reference here tonight is, since that compressed timeline was put in place, planning and codes department has done a lot of work in getting delegated authority to do administrative review dependent upon the size and complexity of the project. I think that in itself allows for an expedited process that speaks to a lot of the less complex applications that are more typical of our small business applications as opposed to the largest of the businesses that usually come forward with technical capacity and consultants on their side. So I don't want to lose our expedited process that we've worked so hard to preserve or create for our small business community. I'd like to see that timeline saved, salvaged for them. It's when you get into the larger, more complex site plans that I think that compressed timeline has been most detrimental to us. So I'd like to take a look and examine that, not lose the good, get rid of the bad, make those amendments going forward.
Councilor Hanselman has her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick question or just confirmation. I know that we had sent this out to Ms. Collins. Are we assuming that she's forwarded to the folks that participated in the letter? Or is that something that we did as well? I mean, did we reach out directly to the folks that had put that letter together? Or is that all through Ms. Collins?
Attorney Cassafikis made the report available to Attorney Collins. What she does with her clients is not my knowledge base. I've made it available to administration, I've made it available to the planning board.
Thank you.
City council, and now we've published the report publicly, so.
And then just a quick follow-up thing, Steve. I would hope at some point in the future, perhaps, we could revisit that definition or that conversation about business friendly. I think that's an ongoing point of concern with some of our planning board members, perhaps. And I really appreciate the effort that you put into that. I'd want to see if that resonated with members of the zoning committee as well as the planning board, and maybe can revisit that at some point in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hanselman. Councilor Martell?
Yeah, just a little bit of a follow-up to questions around the incompletes. Do they get sort of the next step that's incomplete? Or would they get all the stuff that's missing, and then they just weren't filling that in? Because I saw one of those slides where it looked like they went back and forth, what, 20 times or so? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Many times applicants, when they're given the list of what's incomplete in their submission, they don't recognize that. They may contest that they need to submit the material as has been noted. They may disagree with the city's ordinance or our planning department on, but technically it has to be submitted as far as the complete review of their application. That's where the rub starts.
Okay, thank you.
And I will note that there's a review first, and anything that's incomplete in that application is referenced and provided back to the applicant. They have the opportunity to address that. So as has been recognized in the mineral task force work, the industry itself, as far as mineral extraction is concerned, they've identified the issues with our current ordinances as far as that five-year permit and the detrimental aspects of that. Make those amendments to accommodate the industry. The switch side of that is, we currently are not hard enough for when there's significant violations out there on their operations manual. You have not seen the city close- You have not seen the city close any of these, these operations down. They continue forward and work and work and work at the permit, work and work and work at the permit. While they continue to operate out of compliance, I can show you records where there, there were two, if not three renewals done all the time. There were violations throughout that entire operating period. So if we're going to make the, the beneficial amendments for the business industry, even they concur that you've got to have compliance by the industry once those amendments come forward. That's where that independent outside engineering firm that's well-qualified to do those inspections becomes critical. Because if, if that outside entity deems that there's an area of non-compliance in there for the operations manual that you're operating under, your grade lines are off, or whatever that is, that is the definitive ruling on that, and it needs to be addressed ASAP in that year, not five years post. That's where a strong recognition came forward in the initial conversation with that task force is, some of these violations, e- even to the, to the non-knowledge of the operator, if the, if, if their grade line is off for a five-year period, and it's not caught till they, they go for a reapplication, cost of, of coming back into compliance can be astronomical. But if that's, if that's monitored appropriately on an annual basis, an outside consultant, if that operator doesn't have the technical capacity to do it on their own, then it's caught early enough that it's not as detrimental to the business to make that correction. That's really, that's the trade-off, right?
I have one question, Steve, and it's relating to, it's really technical about Granicus that we use for our documents. Is there a part of this plan to make sure that the planning board is able to utilize Granicus in the same way that we can, which seems a whole lot more friendly than the information that I've been seeing that comes from the planning department as part of their package?
I, I find that as, as something that, that can, can move forward.
So I would, I would think that that's very important.
Yeah, we, we find Granicus an incredible tool, and then pushing that from Granicus over to I legislate, so.
Right, so, so that, is that part of, I mean, I, did I miss it? I mean, I just didn't, I, I thought I, I just want to make sure. For me, that's one way that we can make the planning, the planning board's job easier. And I actually think in the end it will be easier for the planning department rather than, I mean, it seems like it works really well for the council, and I, I, we have this tool available, and I don't understand why it's not being used right now, so.
I'll have to, I'll have to review that. Let me, let me review that with the, the planning director. One of the, one of the issues that, that I, comes to my mind most, most quickly is the sheer size of, of some of the plans that are submitted. They're very large-scale plans, they have multiple layers per sheet. I know when we, when we insert even a small one into the city council packet, Larissa and I are very familiar with what that does in trying to present that to the public. So let, let me review those, that piece with them.
All right, that's fine. I, I, you know, that's the kind of thing I need to understand because it, I find the, if I, I just, because I'm used to Granicus now, I find those other documents that are coming more difficult for me to, to navigate. I just find Granicus so easy that I, if I was, I just, I'll tell you the truth, I'd rather be a city councillor than a planning board member.
I'd, I'd like to recognize that the, the, the workload before our site plan committee, as well as the planning board and the planning department, is just, it's overwhelming at this point in time. Positive thing for the city because there's a lot of development taking place. We're severely understaffed, it's overwhelming, there's a lot going on there. There's a lot of amendments that are being asked for that are coming forward. The planning board itself, I want to commend them for the dedication that they have. They deal with a lot of information, they deal with a lot of volume and a lot of technically, technically difficult reviews. So just want to aid, aid their process as much as possible through, through this review that we've just gone through.
Absolutely. Any other councils from any other, any comments from any other councillors? I don't see any. So what I'm looking for is a, is a motion to accept the review and the draft action plan submitted by the city manager.
So move, Madam Mayor?
Okay, I'll second.
And a second by Councillor Stackpole? Was that, okay, so a motion by Councillor Hanselman and a second by Councillor Stackpole. Is there any more discussion? Seeing that, I will call the roll. Councillor Martell?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Sorry, yes.
And I am also, yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Steve. We'll look forward to hearing the updates. So we are over time. We can, I, I can, we can adjourn now, but if there is no objection and you wish to continue, we can finish with comments and agenda items.
I would like to adjourn.
I'll move, I'll move, I'll move, we extend the meeting a half an hour.
Yeah, fifteen minutes, Bob.
Oh, whatever.
So you're, you, so let's just ask, are there any objections to continuing until we finish comments and agenda items?
Don't we have to have a motion and a vote? Don't we have to?
I think that without a, we could, but I, it was, as long as there's no objection, I consider that a unanimous.
I object.
It's just for comments. Who's objecting? Councillor Martell?
This is Jonathan. Yes, thank you.
Jonathan, are you objecting to the extended time or moving ahead without a vote?
I am objecting to the extended time.
Nice, so we're adjourned.
So there's no, there's no point in voting.
So I will, I will declare the adjourn. Thank you all.
Bye.
All right, thank you, everyone.